Ms. Bonkey.
Here.
Mr. Cavalier.
Here.
Mr. Cohen. Mr. Dutenheffer.
Here.
Mrs. Mauer.
Here.
Ms. Shelton.
Here.
Mr. Snellings.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Sadly, one of those killed last week in Virginia Beach was a former employee of Stafford County. Christopher Rapp served as Director of Public Works from 2015 to 2017. Chris will be remembered as a kind and gentle man. Please stand and join me in a moment of silence. Amen. There will be a memorial service tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. out by the Veterans Memorial in memory of Chris and the other 11 folks that died with him. At this time, I'd like to ask Jeff Shover to join me up front with the citizen volunteers. Hey, Nick. How you doing?
Good.
Good to see you. Okay.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Not all.
You're talking loud enough.
I can talk loud enough. There we go. Can everybody hear me? All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jeff Shover. I am the manager of your Citizens Assistance and Volunteer Service's office. All right, there we go. And it is my pleasure today to recognize some of the most wonderful people that we have in our county and our community, some of our volunteers. These volunteers that are standing behind me are distinguished in the fact that they give more than 200 hours this year, and we have some that give over 1,000 hours a year. Now, I wanted to make sure that we recognize not only our volunteers that give that many hours back, but also our volunteers that give maybe 1, 5, 10 hours a year to us. All of our volunteers are important to us, and we cherish them greatly. It's my honor to be able to work with them in my 14th year working in the Citizens Assistance Office, and I, there is no better job in the county. I get to work with wonderful people every day, and it, and I'm really very, very fortunate. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Snellings, and he's going to read the proclamation for us.
Thank you, Jeff. These guys really do a great job, and I tell you, they save the county so much money. And it's certainly a privilege for me as chairman this afternoon to be up here to recognize them. A proclamation from the Board recognizing Stafford County citizen volunteers. Whereas citizen volunteers provide switchboard, reception, and ombudsman services to the George L. Gordon Government Center and other county facilities, and in the past year assisted more than 42,000 customers and processed over 10,000 phone calls. This year, citizen volunteers donated more than 35,000 hours in response to requests for data, traffic and transportation services at the sheriff's office, clerical and reception support, providing assistance at special events, coaching, basketball, cheerleading. Who are the cheerleaders? Next time, we're going to do one separate for the cheerleaders. Football teams and providing immediate response and assistance during local weather events. The value has been estimated at $1.1 million. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors that it be and it does hereby recognize, commend, and thank all Stafford County citizen volunteers.
Mr. Snellings, if you would join me, I'm going to read out some certificates that we have here for our distinguished volunteers. So, where is, excuse me, is Kay here? I don't think Kay's here. Nope. Let me just put that one down. All right, Mr. Donald Brennan for 365 hours this year.
Congratulation. Really good. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Tom Commensys for your 870 hours of volunteer service this year.
Good to see you, Tom. Tom, Tom is my name. Department, I'd see him go by the house all the time.
Wonderful. Ms. Jane Connor, Ms. Jane Connor in her 433 hours this year.
Congratulations, Jane. Thank you so much.
All right. Ms. Charlotte Crisman, Ms. Charlotte has been one of my longest-tenured volunteers here. I've known her forever, and she gave 751 hours this year. Thank you, Ms. Charlotte. Thank you.
Congratulations. Ms. Charlotte actually runs fire and rescue. I mean, if you go, well, it's in charge.
That's right. That's right. Ms. Valerie Hart, 240 hours. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
And I think this is the record breaker, Mr. Nick Kopczynski, 1,906 hours served.
Thank you, Nick. Appreciate that. You're retiring, aren't you? Do you ever stay home?
Right.
No.
She wouldn't have. Perfect. Maria Morrison, 200 hours. Thank you very much, hon, yeah.
Thank you, Maria. We really appreciate that.
And Ms. Kenna Sander, 903 hours.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
And I see Ms. Doris snuck in right behind you, Mr. Snellings, so I'm going to make sure to get hers. Ms. Doris McAdams, 205 hours this year.
Thank you, Doris. We really appreciate it.
Mark Seymour, 1,551 hours. Let's give Mark a big round of applause. And last, but certainly not least, Mr. William Tigler with 202 hours of service this year. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it. Really good.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, again, it was my privilege to work with these wonderful folks this year, and let's give them one more round of applause, please. Thank you so much.
Thank y'all very much.
Okay, folks, there are a couple of people that I wanted to make sure to recognize this year. We have a program called YES Program, and it's an acronym for Youth Engaged in Stafford. This year, in 2018 and 2019 school year, we had a record number of students from all of our high schools here located in Stafford County. We had 13 different participants that go through a very rigorous application process. They go through an interview process, and then, of course, they're placed on one of our many board-appointed committees or commissions. They have an active role actually on that committee or commission to give input from our youth. It was one of our board's objectives to make sure that we get the youth involved in our county. We want to cultivate their ideas and make sure that their voice is heard, and this was a wonderful opportunity that they took advantage of. So I'd like to ask if my YES, my YES students would come on up to the front now, please. First, Mr. Joe Cubicki.
Congratulations, Joe. Thank you.
Next, and I believe, Mr. Merk, this is your second year in the program, right? That's it? Getting ready to graduate, right? Mr. Connor Merk.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next, Mr. Jarrett Holmes.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
And last but not least, Ms. Serena Heron.
Thank you, Serena. Congratulations.
I tell you, I could not be more proud of our students here in Stafford County. These folks right here really take community seriously. And how do we become a great community? We become a voice as one, and we cannot be one voice without the voice of our youth. And these folks here have, have been steadfast, and they've brought tons of good ideas to the board committee and commissions, and I couldn't be more proud of them. So if we could get one more big round of applause for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Snellings. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it, and it's so good to see the youth come up. It kind of renews my faith in this generation we've got coming up behind us. This time, I want to turn it over to the Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, Mr. Tom Cohen, who has a proclamation and a presentation for our law enforcement and safety personnel.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Mr. Chairman. If the members of the public safety, first responders, and our sheriff's department will come up, this is to recognize move-over month, which is June. So if you all come up, thank you, Sheriff. Gentlemen? All right. One of the great things we get to do is recognize our public servants. The people who you see up here are just some of the, those first responders that are doing great things to help us. Whenever you hear a siren coming down the road, they are doing something to help us in our community. I've done a ride-along, and I've seen one of our police officers get hit by somebody while they're dealing with a situation on the side of the road. So it's very, very important that we take this serious, that we look out for those people who are on the side of the road and those who are going to rescue and deal with the people who are in need. So I'll read the proclamation. Whereas law enforcement officers and first responders face many dangers in their honorable mission to protect and serve the residents of and visitors to Stafford County, and whereas since 1999, 213 on-duty law enforcement officers nationwide have been struck and killed while working on highways. And whereas since 2007, the Virginia State Police and the Virginia Department of Transportation have been involved with the Move Over or Slow Down Campaign to educate members of the public on the move-over law, which was enacted to protect law enforcement officers and first responders stopped on the side of the highway. And whereas, despite the fact that move-over laws have been adopted in all 50 states, approximately 71% of Americans are not aware of these laws. The Move Over or Slow Down Campaign is dedicated to educating the public on how to use these laws and how they can save lives of both first responders and motorists. And whereas, the Stafford County Sheriff's Office and Virginia State Police patrol Stafford's roads every day, keeping roads safe and helping motorists. And whereas, Stafford County recognizes the importance of educating the population about the move-over law to assist in protecting the safety of law enforcement officers and first responders. And therefore, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Stafford County Board of Supervisors, on this, the 4th day of June 2019, hereby recognizes June 2019 as Move Over Awareness Month.
On behalf of Team Public Safety who's standing up here, and so many others who are not here today, who are out on the streets working, we want to thank everyone for bringing the extra awareness and attention to the need of moving over and making sure that we keep all our first responders safe. We have an incredible team here. We work hard together to keep our community protected. We love our community, and the fact that you all care enough about us to take a moment to recognize how important this issue is and reminding others to just be careful. And I want to thank the board members, too, for the proclamation. God bless you.
Thank you. You're the big man behind us, so go ahead.
Thank you very much. I really would like to recognize Colonial Forge High School and Lisa Davis and their campaign. They made this part of their EMT program, educating the youth of this county as the importance of the move-over awareness campaign. So Lisa, thank you very much for taking the initiative to bring this to the county schools, and thank you for the students in taking part. If it wasn't for them, we wouldn't be here today with this proclamation, so thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much, and I hope everyone will take the time to treat our first responders with the respect they deserve. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. County Administrator, we have any additions or deletions? No additions and deletions. We'll move on to presentations by the public. I do have several speaker cards that I will go in order as they were submitted. I apologize, Ms. Mauer. Thank you very much. Do have a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion to second and a discussion. Hearing none. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. The motion passes seven to nothing. This time, we'll do presentations by the public. I would ask that when you step forward, state your name and address, unless you are a student. If you are a student, do not state your address. You have three minutes to speak. When the green light comes on, that's the beginning of your time. When the yellow light comes on, you have about a minute. And when the red light comes on, I would ask that you please wrap up your comments. With that said, I'll go through the speaker cards first, and then we'll open it up to the rest of the boardroom. First card I have is Mr. Greg Gavin.
Gregory D. Gavin, 242 Stony Hill Road in Hartwood. Dear members, I speak today about one of my favorite, uniquely American holidays, Juneteenth. According to the Montpelier Foundation, Juneteenth is the oldest and nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery, slavery in the United States, marking the state that the last enslaved people learned of their freedom. The month of June and the 19th day were combined to form Juneteenth. From its Galveston, Texas, origin in 1865, observance of Juneteenth as an African-American emancipation day has spread across the country. It is official holiday recognized in 45 states and the District of Columbia. Looking at our past, our forefathers' legacies, which we hold in the highest esteem, can no longer hide behind a patina of virtue. Revisionist history is unearthed daily at Montpelier in the Somerset area of our neighboring Orange County of Virginia, approximately 60 miles away. Funded largely by David Rubenstein, a well-known philanthropist of Baltimore, Maryland, and founder of the Carlisle Group, Montpelier, Montpelier is being rediscovered in a much more profound and human way. Cries from the past, cries of those enslaved and their descendants and their life stories are now hold equal ground to the much lauded life stories of James Madison and Thomas Jefferson and their descendants. The lowest in our society's history, certainly in Virginia's history, and specifically in our own history, the humans, the enslaved human is raised up, acknowledged, and dignified. They are remembered for their lives, who they were, and their talents, their skills and their tenacity to live and prosper as they lived enslaved to another. Today, we embrace these values and the stories of the enslaved Americans as we come to understand that it's their stories that provide the foundation of our history and the foundation of many of the historical buildings like Montpelier that we enjoy today. Most of the fine craftsmanship and the beauty of the house and its vast acreage can be attributed to the enslaved human beings. In studying their past lives, we learned a very valuable lesson. What does one do and how does one act when being treated very poorly and wrongfully subjected to the will of another person that shows no mercy, no compassion, no dignity, and no human value? The answer is one perseveres, toils daily, and creates finely crafted plantations like Montpelier, Mount Vernon, and Monticello that we lovingly embrace today. One would hope that perhaps their greater story will be told and celebrated years later. It is. I speak today as an echo of their American story, of their greatness that shapes our Virginia. Please join me in celebrating and acknowledging these people, these human beings who were enslaved and were so cruelly treated. Please join the Montpelier Foundation for Juneteenth 2019 as we honor our ancestors and celebrate African-American history, food, music, faith, family, and freedom. The event is free and is from 10 to 4 at Montpelier Saturday, June 15th. Please join me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. My next speaker card is Mr. Jeff Adams.
Jeff Adams, 449 Kellogg Mill Road. I come here to say thank you. I left here two weeks ago, never imagining that I would see what was done within 24 hours. VDOT was out there like it was promised, and you could see. And the work has been continuing, and it looks better than it's looked in the last 40 years. And I want to thank everybody from VDOT, this board, I know Jason Tyree was involved. I want to say thank you. It's made one heck of a difference. You can see, and I appreciate it. We've got something else I want to talk about. April 14th, 15th, 2007, I was at Virginia Tech taking a sheep shearing class. Monday the 16th, the plan was to celebrate my wife's 51st birthday. Evening news changed it that night, Virginia Tech. Fast forward, Friday, December 14th, I was about to celebrate my 58th birthday. Sandy Hook was on the news. Saturday morning, we found out that my wife's former boss didn't make it through Virginia Tech or for Virginia Beach, so when I, what I'm getting ready to say hits home. 60 days ago, at the middle school I teach at, we had a lockdown drill in the cafeteria during lunch. We could not hear. Deputy Curtis can tell you, we could not hear. It was a disaster, and to this day, it's still not been fixed. How we can afford to put 800 students and staff in danger because a system doesn't work to let you know that there's a gunman in the building is beyond my wildest dreams. I'm not putting anybody to blame. I'm not, but this needs to be fixed, in my opinion. I know that in the last 60 days, I was in that building Fri, or Thursday, I'm sorry. As of Thursday, that system has not been retested with us in the building, and therefore I assume the corrections have not been made. I don't think any parents should send their child to school until that system is fixed. Putting 800 in danger every day is not acceptable to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. I asked the county administrator if he would ask someone to get with Mr. Adams, let's find out the school and report this to the school board, and ask them to get involved in it. Thank you, Mr. Adams.
You're welcome.
You are going to be in a little trouble tonight because you told your wife's age.
No, no, you have, you have to do the math.
Yeah, I did the math. Next speaker card is Caitlin Fullmore.
My name is Caitlin Fullmore, and I am a junior at Colonial Forge. And I am introducing a group of students who have been burdened with fixing our county's problems. I want to open up with some stats. In 2017, Virginia had 127,375 car crashes. Of these 127,135, 2,372 of these car crashes occurred in Stafford County jurisdiction, nine of these crashes being fatal. With Stafford County had a population of 1,046,649 in 2017, making the chances of one being in a car crash 1.6%, and the chances of someone dying in a car crash being around .003%, nearly impossible. The chances, the chances of it being someone I knew, assuming I know around 100 people, was about .00002%. All of these numbers might be confusing to some of you, but to sum it up, the chances of me losing a friend to a car crash was damn near impossible, yet it happened, and I was introduced to the cold shock of death. What makes it so much worse, even worse than it already is, is the fact that this event could have been prevented. The impossible crash that took Helen could have been prevented, could have been prevented, yet it wasn't. I ask why? Helen Wang had just turned 17. She was a bright soul, one whom was extinguished too early. Today, my friends and I have decided that we are not going to wait for the impossible to happen to another family or another group of friends. We are here to make a change. We understand that this is not the board's fault, but lack of change will be your fault. We are not here to yell and place blame. We are here to make sure preventable accidents are that, prevented. Today, we would, today we will be discussing our short, mid, and long-term goals we believe the county should take into consideration. On behalf of my fellow students, I would also like to thank the Board of Supervisors and VDOT for paving Able Lake and cutting vegetative growth that create a blind spot, both improving the exit from a popular summer spot and also proving that fixing dangerous road conditions, conditions is not an impossibly arduous task to ask of the adults of this county. Please don't wait for someone else to die before you act. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker card is Isabella Motta. If I'm pronouncing someone's name wrong, please correct me. I do apologize.
Isabella Mata.
Mata, I apologize. I apologize.
Good afternoon. My name is Isabella Mata, and I am a junior at Colonial Forge. I remember the day after I heard the news about Helen. I was extremely upset and shaken and sad about losing my friend, who I had known for three years. I saw her every other day during the school year. But I was even angrier at the fact that the area where she died, the turn that she was making, it was known to be dangerous. It was known to be risky, and it was known to be blind. And yet, nothing was done to address that before the community lost Helen Wang. In talking to my friends, who also knew Helen, they also harbored the same questions and same grief and the same frustration over this issue. And we didn't know what to do, but we knew that we wanted to do something. So we concentrated our emotions into something that could make even a marginal difference. We created a survey to gain more insight into what others thought of the roads in Stafford County. This survey was then advertised through social media, QR codes, emails, and through word of mouth. By the close of the survey, which probably was open for about a week and a half to two weeks, we scraped it up in like two days after May 16th. By the close of the survey, we had a total of 1,213 responses from many different groups, such as student, local, and bus drivers, parents, walkers, bikers, and even ambulance drivers. These responses were then compiled into statistics and summarized into an easily comprehensible format that will be discussed later. Through this survey, we as a group gained valuable insight on, to what the roads, what their conditions were, their danger, and how the public perceived them to be as they were driving on them. It was interesting to note that, going through the responses of the survey, that we had a couple roads that showed up every single time. And in the survey, we did not mention any specific roads. We just simply asked what roads in Stafford do you think have the dangerous conditions? And many of the roads that kept popping up repeatedly were roads that students, students drive to school every single day. However, I would like to acknowledge a little margin of error. Because we had such little time to create this in time for this board meeting, lots of the, the advertisement was mainly over Mountain View and Colonial Forge area and populations, because that is what our group is comprised of at the moment, and so that it might be a little bit biased towards Colonial Forge and Mountain View populations. I do want to leave you with this. Any action that we can do cannot bring Helen back. It can't take away any sort of pain that we felt at the incident. But now is the time to act. Everyone is looking at you. You guys were elected up here because someone believed that you can make a difference, and you did show us that with Able Lake and, you know, making that better and improving that and making it safer. But we have a long ways to go before we can prevent everything that, before we can prevent a lot more things that have happened in the past that we... a lot more things that have happened in the past that we regret to talk about. And so I'd like you to just be open to our ideas, to listen to them, and we are not here to argue or blame. We really want to work with you, and we really want to improve our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker card is, you're going to have to help me with this, Josephine. Josephine?
Gukin.
Gukin?
Gukin.
Gukin.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Josephine Gukin, and I'm a junior at Colonial Forge High School. On May 23rd, we sent out an effective survey with the intention of getting useful information about the roads in Stafford County, mainly gathering answers revolving around backroads. As of June 3rd, 1,213 people have taken this survey. Upon starting the survey, you were asked to state if you were a student driver, bus driver, local driver, or passenger driver, with most respondents being student drivers or local drivers. The first question on the survey was what road in Stafford County, or roads in Stafford County, need improvement for safety reasons? And many roads were stated, with several roads reappearing a drastic amount of times, and our top five coming out to being Kellogg Mill Road, Poplar Road, Mountain View Road, Stefonega Road, and Winding Creek Road. Kellogg Mill was stated around 325 times, Poplar Road about 300 times, Mountain View Road 215 times, Stefonega 117 times, and Winding Creek 147 times. These five roads posed the biggest amount of issues and dangers to respondents. Sorry. Out of the total number of respondents, 1,157 of them stated that these five roads posed the most dangers. Some others were Shelton Shop, Ramuth Church, Trusslow, and many more. After listing the roads they felt needed the most improvements, we asked for specific conditions that needed to be fixed to ensure safety on these roads, and what dangers the roads pose. Blind spots were the most stated condition with a count of 828. Potholes quickly followed with 819, overgrown vegetation with 608, drop-off with 457, parts of the road missing had a count of 383, lack of safety signage had a count of 278, and speed limit had a count of 267. .5 percent and under were conditions such as flooding with and not a sufficient amount of streetlights. As stated by a past speaker at the last board meeting, she said that she held her breath while leaving Abel Lake parking lot that afternoon and hoped for the best. We felt the need to stress a question on if people make everyday risks like this when driving. In response to "Do you feel that you have to make risky decisions while driving on a regular basis?", 78.9 percent responded yes, and 21.1 percent responded no. These stats stress how dangerous it is for drivers, especially young ones, to be on these roads that give them a sense of danger and leads them to taking a risk while driving, things that are not safe for drivers to endure, not once, not ever. In addition to gathering info about the backroads, we also asked if anyone has ever been involved in an accident specifically on a Stafford County backroad due to a condition or hazard, and there were more no's than yeses. Of the 200 people that responded yes, 119 of them stated that the condition that led to the accident has not been fixed. We also asked for any other statements regarding the conditions of the roads, and the responses were not only overwhelming, but so extremely powerful. Of all the statements, this one further states our purpose for the survey and our presence here today. It should not take someone passing away to change the current state of the roads. Driving in Stafford is too dangerous, and the roads are not adapting as Stafford is urbanized. We can do better. We must do better. Please don't wait for someone else to die. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Charlotte Vasquez.
My name is Charlotte Vasquez. I am a student at Colonial Forge High School. As displayed in the responses of our survey, we had over 1,200 people respond and say that the roads in this county are not as they should be. Some of their problems arise from potholes, narrow lanes, the absence of a shoulder, and blind spots due to overgrown vegetation. The latter being one of the most pressing issues in the county, as well as one of the most preventative and easy to fix. Not being able to see if you're going to turn into traffic and risking your life to drive home is what cost Helen Wang her life. She didn't deserve to die because of overgrown foliage that VDOT manages three times a year. At the last board meeting two weeks ago, this vegetation was cleared the subsequent morning at the site of her accident, an act that made the intersection safe to drive on, an act that encouraged the hope of attaining safe roads throughout the county. Abel Lake was a start, and a good one, but that is not the only road that needs to be changed. As displayed in our survey, over 1,200 driveways, drivers gave their input of dozens of other roads that need the same action, such as the intersection from Winding Creek onto Shelton Shop. Making a right-hand turn on that road is the equivalent to literally blindly turning, praying that you'll make it out of that turn because you cannot see if there are cars coming. Students are holding their breath, hoping to arrive to school safely because of these blind spots. Students are forced to get used to their dangerous commute because they quite literally have no other option. Students are blinded by the overgrown and mismanaged vegetation at several intersections in our county every day, and they will keep testing fate until these intersections are cleared. If the trees by Abel Lake were cleared before Helen Wang ever got there, she would be home safely with her family. We need to start being preventative instead of reactive, and we need to start clearing these trees before someone else doesn't make it home, before another student, or parent, or teacher, or bus driver doesn't make it out of that turn. Not because we're a county full of bad drivers, but because you failed to do something about these conditions and someone else has to die in order to raise the concern higher on your priority list. So be preventative and stop this from happening again. Stop students from turning onto a road not knowing if it was even safe to go. Clear these trees so all of Stafford County can sleep a little bit easier, knowing their commute is a little bit safer. Don't wait for someone else to die. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker card is Kylie Fields.
My name is Kylie Fields, and I'm a student at Colonial Forge, and I'll be talking about the issue of potholes on our roads. As a student driver, I drive many of the roads that appeared most on our survey daily, if not weekly, to include Mountain View, Stefonega, Winding Creek, Poplar, Hartwood, Trusslow, and Kellogg Mill. On my drive to school today, I counted eight potholes on Kellogg Mill alone, not counting those on Poplar and Chacoford Wells. While some might argue that this is not a lot and that they are eventually fixed, there are always more, and they, in the opinion of many drivers and my own, always grow too large and numerous before any action is taken. When collecting data from our survey, an astounding amount of individuals commented on the issue of potholes, ones they have had to swerve to avoid and ones that have caused damage to their cars because they have been forced to go over them on the account of extremely narrow roads. The word "pothole" came up 949 times on the survey, and there were numerous comments on how these potholes have impacted an individual's daily drive. As my friends and I were organizing this group and preparing for today's message, we learned that VDOT claims to put white spray paint around potholes that they have found. However, I have only seen this on one pothole, even though I've been looking deeper into this after I was made aware of this fact. Many individuals simply commented "Fix the potholes," or "There are potholes everywhere." I found that the latter comment was correct, for as I tried to narrow down the list of roads that potholes were exclusively noticed on, the number was still too great. This is not just a problem for student drivers. This is a problem for parents, for teachers, for residents needing to drive these backroads to leave or get to their houses. Helen may not have died because of a pothole, but someday, someone might. These blemishes in the road are not insignificant. They are widely noticed and feared, forcing drivers to decide between risking their life going around a pothole or causing damage to their car, sometimes major, because they were forced to go over one. There is no time to waste on this issue. There are no excuses for as an easy one to fix. Don't wait for a tragic event to end these issues. Let us join together as a community to be proactive and not reactive. Don't wait for someone else to die. Thank you so much for your time and attention and all you have done so far. We look forward to expanding on this platform with you in the future.
Thank you very much. Next speaker card is Lauren Livingston.
My name is Lauren Livingston, and I am a junior at Colonial Forge High School. I'd first like to thank VDOT and the Board of Supervisors for taking the time to pave and clear the overgrown vegetation at the Abel Lake Road Ramp. As Helen's friends, it meant a lot to me and us that the site was taken care of. Although Helen's death has brought up safety issues on Kellogg Mill Road, it has not emphasized how poorly maintained other Stafford County roads have been. I've read how 12 crashes have occurred on Kellogg Mill in the last two years, and nobody has addressed fixing the small issues on Kellogg Mill and other Stafford County roads, and how they have attained them for many years, such as the overgrown vegetation, which proved to be a problem as Helen attempted to turn on Abel Lake, on the Abel Lake Road Ramp. Sadly, it wasn't until something tragic happened for us to see improvement and bring awareness to how dangerous these roads are, especially discerning teenagers who risk their lives driving on them. In the last board meeting, VDOT proposed a plan that estimated a much longer time than what's realistic to maintain the safety of drivers. We would like to see the same swift action and hope for it to be enforced just the same to other roads that can cause major accidents. I praise VDOT's and your swift action and their abilities. This proves that VDOT can, and in fact, work much faster than what they planned. Although we praise your efforts, VDOT, you have only fixed part of our roads and fail to worry about minor issues that can be done easily, such as the potholes and overgrown vegetation. It's obvious to everyone that these roads are dangerous, and the best scenario is that they're fixed completely. But some of the major factors that can make them dangerous are the minor issues. We ask VDOT that you take these minor concerns seriously and address them quickly. One of our major trouble is that the public did not have an easier access or attention to reach VDOT or to inform VDOT of blinding vegetation or potholes. We were able to reach the phone number for the website and call the 21st hour service that allows people to submit problems with the roads, such as these minor details. As we did so, we were able to access information stating how 25 outstanding requests were made concerning the potholes on Kellogg Mill Road around Colonial Forge. We understand these submissions could be repeatedly referring to similar problems, but most were made in mid to late January of this year, and seeing how they have not been fixed, hope to resolve this problem and allow action to be taken on fast. I give a suggestion to create a link to the Stafford County website so we can have an easier access to VDOT's numbers or contacts. It will provide more information and raise awareness on what needs to be fixed on these dangerous roads. Please take action now. Don't wait for someone else to die. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker card, Eleanor Motta. I'm going to get this right one time. Eleanor, where are you? Come on down. I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Eleanor Motta, and I'm a junior at Colonial Forge. As you well know, the main reason for our being here today is because of Helen and all of the student drivers who have fallen victim to the problems of our roads. With a growing population and thus more student drivers, these already horrid roads have become increasingly dangerous. We are pushing all of our young drivers down small, winding, unkept backroads and giving them no alternatives. For several of our students, taking the backroads is the only way to get to school. There's no way to reach Forge or Mountain View, for example, without taking the backroads. As we have already established, these roads are dangerous. In our survey, the majority of participants stated that they do feel that they must take risks in order to traverse on these roads. In addition, it takes many students upwards of half an hour simply to get to school. I actually ride the bus, and it takes me about 45 minutes to get to school. If there's traffic, it's a little bit more. And most of these students are stuck waiting in standstill traffic, only to arrive at an overcrowded school. When it becomes dangerous for students to drive to school, when commutes are long and schools are packed to the brim, then it's time to rethink our school system. The fact is, we need the new school that is in the county plan, high school number six, and we need it now. A school off of 17 would divert traffic from our already congested backroads, and it would save students from unnecessarily long commutes to school. According to the proposed plan, the new school is projected to be finished in eight years, meaning it will open in the year 2027. I'd like to say, on behalf of all the schools which are overcrowded, on behalf of all the students who must endure nearly hour-long bus rides, eight years is not soon enough. I should not need to preach about this. I think we all kind of know. These problems are evident, and this high school that is planned is already one of the goals for our county. However, I ask that progress begin now and that it can be considered a priority rather than a vague, long-term goal. I'd like to leave you with this. The Renaissance scholar Aristotle once said that "The main hope of a nation lies in the proper education of its youth." We really want to see a better future, a better future in our county, so we must invest in our school systems, and that's really what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker card is Michelle Snow.
Hi, I'm Michelle Snow, a junior, a short junior, at Mountain View High School. We understand that the actions and plans that we have proposed take time, and we're ready for that. These past couple of weeks, we have been working hard to have our voices and mission heard, along with the hustle of our normal schoolwork and activities. School's almost out, which means that we'll have more time to take action and create change to prevent other avoidable tragedies from happening. One step towards maintaining road conditions in our area is having a report system for local residents. There is no current effective way for locals to report road issues. The Virginia Department of Transportation has a website where you're able to submit complaints about roads in our state, yet it takes months for a request to be fulfilled if the problem ever was resolved. I know back in February, my family reported a bad pothole on our commute to school, and it's still pending. It hasn't been answered. So that's just one instance. I'm sure there are others. When submitting a request through VDOT, you get a numeric code where you can check the status of your request. There's no human follow-up or connection with the requestee, resulting in a disconnect and oftentimes, no action. People should feel that their voice is being heard and that their concerns matter. A simple solution to this disconnect is creating a website just for Stafford drivers to submit photos and complaints about hazardous road conditions. This website would act as a public platform for locals to vote and discuss the conditions of concern. It would prioritize changes, and it will also provide acknowledgement and feedback to the public so they know their voices are being heard, and it will really connect the community to see that this is an issue that everyone goes through every day when they're driving on these roads. While we have caught the attention of some in Stafford with our survey, to make our roads safer, we need to reach out to the public, especially on protecting the youth and those who will soon be voting. We can do this by creating a social media campaign using a hashtag and pages on various social media platforms where the public can share their images and proof of local dangers on the road. You're able to go to the page and see the concerns, go to the hashtag, and it's just public for everyone to see. Through social media, one can connect with the public and see everybody's posts. Our county needs to be more transparent between public officials and residents. We need to know what is being done to keep our roads safe. We have recently found out about a 10-year plan that VDOT has in action to widen the roads via wedge widening. It prioritizes roads that our local drivers don't see as the main risky roads in our area, according to our survey. If we don't do anything, the next turn you make on these hazardous roads can be your last. We need to work together for our roads to be safe. Transparency and communicating with the public is the only way to prevent future tragedies. These are some simple solutions to promote change. We are ready to do what it takes. Please don't wait for someone else to die because of simple miscommunication. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card is Crystal Aliar. I'm telling you, I'm terrible on these names today. I apologize. I really do.
Hi, my name is Crystal Aliar, and it's okay. You should have seen me before my wedding. I live on 51 Joshua Road, Stafford, Virginia. I've had a privilege to be included with these amazing youth behind me, and I want to thank them. And I also want to thank you guys. You guys were an encouragement to my family through this tragedy. My son Jade Avalar was also in that car with Helen, and he has survived, and he has a long road of healing ahead of him, and we're making steps for that. I came today to thank you, more than anything, for the quick action that was taken on Kellogg Road. And I feel very motivated to help other people and other parents in our county. To be a mom of a surviving child is a different challenge, and my heart goes out to the Wang family, as does my husband's. And the thing that kept crossing Jade's heart and my heart was a way to make a statement, an encouraging one. And what I want to do is continue to encourage these guys to do things legally and orderly. And we made signs, "Clear the trees for Helen, please." We don't know exactly how to implement it. We don't, you know, we've been looking under laws of where signage can be put. We don't want to do anything that causes any discouragement but encouragement in our community, that people can maybe even take actions in their own driveways for their own children, in areas of businesses where their customers may churn out, you know, even in personal levels in our community. Also, for VDOT, these guys said everything so amazing, and I'm very proud of them. And I can't even try to touch what they've done. They've done enough. How do we go forward with VDOT in the sense of what standards that they have, and how can we change the way that they're implementing these things? Because they've been doing something, but now we need to change what's been going on so we can move forward. And I'm just here to thank you guys and to encourage them, and we'll look into how we can do these signs, whether they be in our front yards and in our private yards, until we can make sure that they are not breaking any laws of Stafford County. But thank you very much.
Thank you. My last speaker card is Gina Chan.
My name is Gina Chan. I'm a student at Colonial Forge High School. I'm a junior. I would specifically like to address a turn that I, as well as many other drivers in Stafford, take at least once a day. Coming out of the Embry Mill neighborhood on Shields Road, there's a left turn onto Mine Road. When making that left turn, it's very difficult to see cars approaching from the right. When making that left turn, your sight of the cars coming uphill on the right is completely blocked by the median. I've almost gotten in crashes while making that left turn, but thankfully, I've always made it out okay. However, some people haven't been so lucky. I've noticed several crashes at that turn, one of which included Colonial Forge students. I wish I had all the plausible solutions that you could do for that. I note that the median is definitely a problem. The median blocks your sight from turning. You see that it's clear. By the time you're halfway done with making that turn, a car appears, and by that time, it's too late. I would say, like, if you could do anything about the median, if you could alter it in any way, that would be amazing. Also, if you could lower the speed limit of the median, if you can't do anything about the median, the speed limit is 40 on Mine Road, and I don't see that it's necessary because Mine Road is not that long. It just connects you to Embry Mill Road down all the way on the right, and it's just a neighborhood. It's only 25 miles per hour, and then it connects you to Courthouse Road, which is 40 miles per hour, and it has a stop sign. So if there's anything you could do about the median, because it completely blocks your view from turning left, I would really appreciate it, and so would many other drivers in Stafford County, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the speaker cards I have. Does anyone else on my right wish to address the board on any subject? Yes, please come up. State your name and address, unless you're a student, just state your name.
My name's, sorry. Okay. My name's Jarrett Holmes. I'm a student at Colonial Forge, and I don't want to repeat anything because all the students behind me have said, have given many helpful remarks. I never met Ms. Wang, but that doesn't really matter. When a good person dies, it should have an impact on the community. I missed the meeting that convened the Tuesday following the accident at Abel Lake, which I believe was May the 21st, but having the opportunity to address you all now feels a lot more important now that we've had the chance to see what you've been able to do over the last few weeks, and definitely what you've done at Abel Lake has been very helpful. Although I did want to mention, there is still a problem of pedestrians on that bridge, especially pedestrians that do not walk against traffic, because that puts them in way more danger, because they're not seeing cars that might be approaching them. So there have been a few other cases, of course, of roads that you all have worked to make sure were safer. The intersection of Kellogg Mill and Mountain View Roads was transformed into a four-way stop after many accidents happened there. And I believe Winding Creek and, I'm blanking on the name of the road that Ronnie Thompson Middle School is on, that was made into a four-way stop. Wallpole Street. Thank you. And I was one of the students that responded to the survey, and so I just kind of wanted to bring up one of the particular examples of an intersection that still hasn't been fixed. Winding Creek and Embry Mill Road meet near Ramis Church, of course, and that is an intersection, I believe, about two years ago. You all voted on a land acquisition deal to bring in a new development, so I'm sure you all are very familiar with that area. If you're driving on Embry Mill, you get to Winding Creek, you can't see anything on your right side. A lot of vegetation has been cut there, which is great, but there's still an underlying issue of the land grade, which might take a little bit longer to address, because you really can't see anything. And I also wanted to make one more point about widening the roads, which is a very good idea, as long as you're not adding more lanes. I understand with Courthouse Road, you've been doing a lot to widen that, and I support that, except if you're going to turn that into a four-lane road, whenever this happens, and it's just inevitable anywhere in the country, increased capacity increases the volume of cars driving on a particular road. So in the long term, traffic doesn't get any better, but there are more accidents. So I just thought that would be important to bring up. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right who would like to address the board? Anyone on my left? Yes.
Good afternoon, gentle ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Becky Guy, 96 Salvington Road in the heart of Wyndham. I would like to speak to the agenda item number 25 in my capacity as an elder in the Potomac Indian Tribe. My purpose in appearing before you today is to thank you sincerely and from the bottom of my heart for making the lease agreement possible with our tribe. We began work 10 years ago trying to find a site which we could call home and store our artifacts and our village. Our attempts to get a piece of land got snatched away from us. A developer developed all of that, and so the fundraising and the attempts to find a piece of land continued. You all have experienced a number of turnovers in the board since we first started to work on this, and of course, we've had turnovers within the tribe. Fortunately, we've been able to keep the momentum going, and you all came up with a brilliant idea. So I wanted to make sure that you knew that we appreciate deeply. You're taking charge of something that has been a need for a long, long time. We will certainly do our best to keep this as a trust, and thank you for the lease.
Thank you, Ms. Guy. Anyone on my left who wants to address the board?
David Sousa, 300 House Court, 22554. Good afternoon, members of the board. After what I heard, I took the survey, and I heard about what happened with Helen Wang. I decided to drive some of these roads myself, such as Shelton Shop, Winding Creek, and even when you go down Garrisonville Road down near the Falky Line, it's so different. It's not what you would assume Stafford would be like when I lived. I live in Austin Ridge, and it's way different. The road conditions is much clearer, and there's less sharp turns, but I see the major issue is you put all these suburban development on rural roads. Stafford County was meant to be a rural county. To have a specific example, I would like to point out on the intersection between, I think it's Shelton Shop and the end of Courthouse Road, there is the neighborhood Shelton Woods, or as I like to call it, Shelton No More Woods. They leveled the place, but that's beside the point. That's a huge neighborhood, and you're going to put it on the corner of two, I would say, bad roads, at least Courthouse Road, as you get down to the end, is pretty bad. So that's just an underlying issue I see, both in terms of traffic and visibility coming up in the future. Another point that came to me during, I listened to my fellow peers as they presented, and they did a very good job, I'd like to say. In the countywide survey, someone said that, you know, there may have been a possible student bias, particularly with Colonial Forge and Mountain View High School. Now, I'd like to say that I know this board has a Twitter page. The county, Stafford County, has an official Twitter page. Get a survey out. I would like to suggest you get a survey out, and if there's any news reporters in this room, get that out, too. I call on you to do that, because if we can get the parents, not just the students involved, but the parents and all the other drivers, because this is the official county Twitter page that people look for alerts and things like that, that would be a really good way to get involvement from all different age groups and people who live all over the county. The hashtag, let's start the hashtag StaffordRoadsuck, just for something like dramatic and emotional. And I would say, lastly, listen to my peers. I drove the roads just so I knew what they were talking about, and they are correct. But I know that they said that VDOT has, it takes a long time for VDOT to answer these requests and responses. The reason is that they're statewide. They have to deal with things all over the state. We're one county. That's why I believe local autonomy is always supreme in getting things done, because we are a community. We are a small county. We have the resources and the ability to do things ourselves. I understand that some things are state-maintained roads, and they're in VDOT's control, but if we can take over, let's do that, because as a local government, we have one advantage that VDOT will never have, and that's, we know, this is our home field. We know exactly what we're doing here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the board chamber who would like to address the board? Ms. Hazard.
Holly Hazard, 59, Harwell Drive. I just wanted to echo actually something that Mr. Snelling said. We're in really good hands with the kids that we have here, and I think what was so interesting is we started the meeting talking about getting our youth more involved in the government, and you all have made a really great start. I'm going to be making a major pitch across the street for the same to be done, to get our students involved, but maybe we should think about how we can expand those, because they are the ones who know the social media. They are the ones who know how to reach out. They know those skills that, I am not the technology. Everybody knows that, and they have that energy, too. Many of you know I was involved in a very exciting campaign several years ago, and because of that, it prompted me to get involved in public service even more so than I was. I think these events are creating our leaders of tomorrow, so I hope we can do that. I would also like to thank you all. It is my understanding, I was not able to be here at 11, that there has been a priority for High School Number Six. So if that is indeed true, thank you, because capacity and numbers mean a lot, but our roads, the other things that we have, need to go in these decisions. Thank you for sticking to that and recognizing that and making that a priority. I will learn more about that, but I do thank you for that and listening. And again, I think we have a wonderful start with our kids here, and I hope that we can all work together more with our youth, because we've got a great group. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hazard. Anyone else like to address the board?
Good afternoon. Glad to see that yellow wave today. Two weeks ago, you drove my speech in a way I'd never thought about. Good to hear from you, David. The press is right here on my left, just so you know, and really good comments. Today is 153 days from Election Day. That's where I was, you know, finalizing my candidacy, and it's also 153 days before the lame duck session starts. Let me educate you all about the Courthouse Road project. It's called a divergent diamond. There are only four in the United States that I know of, so it's a very important project, because if you would have let them put a four-leaf clover there, you would have had more safety concerns, because the divergent diamond is built to build in safety. And the county got lucky, okay? And I'll tell you why they're lucky, because they built a firehouse there and they built a hospital, and that's going to improve response times. So as a retired engineer, I can tell you that's a good thing. Now, let me finish money and how things go away. You know, if you go to Hardee's, if you stand in that corner and try to cross the road to go to McDonald's, because maybe you don't want a biscuit and gravy, this board approved $35,000 for a sidewalk to nowhere, so enjoy it. I'd like to comment about the Indian tribe, especially how you're going to preserve the artifacts and the villages. Maybe if you put a casino there, I can get you some Texas Hold'em games, and we could fund your aspects. Today, I tried to get in my senior citizen spot, and I do appreciate the Sheriff's Department responding. You know what I think of empty sheriff cars? If they were out there patrolling, instead of sitting there scaring people, they might be more effective. I think I mentioned Alexa last time. We've got all this technology. We need to do it. And on my way here today, I remember a comment two weeks ago by a school board member about the bus drivers. On Colonial Forge, it has a special handicap aspect, and if you come along from Shelton Shop, it could be a surprise, and just another aspect of why this is a rural county and why there are rural roads, and you made too much development.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the room like to address the board on any subject? Thank you very much. I'll bring it back to the board. I want to take this opportunity to thank the students that are here today. You were very well organized. You presented your presentation very well, and you should be proud of what you did. We listened to you. We are listening to you. We know there's issues out there, and we're going to do our best to correct them. One issue that was brought up by a young man was people walking on that bridge. I was up there at the site on Sunday afternoon, and five young ladies, looked like they're high school age, were walking across that bridge. That is a dangerous bridge. So if you've got any friends that walk that bridge, it is not designed for walking, and it was a scary sight. So please, please, tell everybody in your school, don't walk that bridge. But we did hear what you said. Believe me, transportation is on our agenda for a work session this evening, and we will continue to keep you updated, and we hope that you will continue to keep us updated. Thank you very much. With that, reports by board members.
Mr. Cavalier.
I'll go ahead and defer.
Mr. Cohen.
Thank you very much. I'll be briefer than normal. Several things. I met with the museum board. We're moving forward with the planning for Stafford Museum. We had our river roundtable to deal with the Falmouth, Port of Falmouth down there and the amount of traffic and individuals there. Celebrated Sunday with the Chatham, with the Marine Corps Band and an old-fashioned band concert, which was really neat. The cemetery's commission had a service of remembrance on Memorial Day at the Bethlehem Primitive Baptist Church that I was privileged to go to, along with other people. And then I just want to say, I am very proud of our young adults. I learned a long time ago, the kids are goats. These are young adults who are very impressive. Very impressed with the fire and rescue first responders, the Colonial Forge staff and other staff that helped during the last several weeks. These young adults who spoke today are, I think the phrase that I sort of like is flippin' impressive. The survey they did was professional and intelligent and brought forward great information, and I truly believe that the members of this body, I know I will be moving forward with that. It's important that you know that you have already made a difference, that you will continue to make a difference, and that's all I have.
Mr. Dudenheffer.
I was hoping to follow Ms. Mauer, because I was going to say that I wrote her speech, but, but I'm going to, I'll let her do that, so. Just, I'm glad you stuck around to listen to what, what has to be said here. Fifteen years ago, my daughter was a senior at North Stafford, and she was killed in a car accident on Mountain View High School, right not far from the high school. So I know exactly what you're feeling and what you're going through, and I can't tell you how, how proud I am at the way you've handled yourself here. I wish I could say that I was the same. I mean, some people that were still on the board then will tell you the number of times we showed up and broke down and cried and couldn't, couldn't address the issues that you guys, I know the pain. We still, fifteen years later, friends of my daughter still put messages on her gravestone. And we still have kids drop in from nowhere that we hadn't seen in years just to say hi and to talk about, Emily, you guys will do that about Helen a lot over the years. And it's therapeutic to do it, so. I, I took some notes, and I just thought I would really quickly give you some encouragement or whatever, but I'm asked, even prior to this, what can I do? I'm, you know, I'm a junior in high school. What can I do? You are doing it right now. You can be the conscience of what we do over the next several months, and it will make a tremendous amount of impact, as long as you keep coming. Occasionally, bring your parents. You know, they actually vote, so we need to have the parents come here, too, and have, bring up their concerns. We used to, when I did this, we organized and had 25 people at every meeting for about five months. So this is not a short-term effort on your part. This is a long-term effort. Your, your organization and the way you presented it was, was perfect. The only organization I can think ever made a long-term presentation and presence was, we were talking about earlier, was Towering Concerns, and that was because they had a bunch of engineers who were, were in that. So you guys are mature beyond your age. Who's ever counseling you are, it's really, really important. But don't stop. You guys need to come out, bring your friends out, you know, because you are our conscience, and you are the reason we sit here. You're the reason I, I'm the, the whole reason of, of road safety is the reason I sit here today, fifteen years after my daughter died, fourteen years after getting elected, because I was out there and realized that in order to make a permanent difference, I had to get over here to do the same. And I've had some successes, and you can look around Stafford, you'll see them, but not enough. In the next, next six weeks or so, this board will have to decide. A, a major factor that no one has addressed in their discussion is, is that everything we do has a price tag. It, it, I mean, I wish I could tell you it didn't, and that we have this pot of gold at the end of the rainbow, and we could just roll it all out and do that, but it doesn't. And to be honest with you, we haven't done a good job of funding those projects that need, need to get done, the ones you've identified. We just completed a study where we had professionals spend a year looking at all the roads, just like you're saying, and I think if, if you have, it's online, all the backup paperwork and everything that's there. But what, what it's kind of missing is the subjectivity that you guys present as far as emphasis. So an important part of what you're doing is education. You guys, in order to be effective when you come forward, you have to be educated in what you're saying, because we get people who walk up here, I could give you examples, who walk up here and make crazy comments about things that they, they have no clue the background of what they're, what they're talking about. They just have come up with some, I won't use the word I'm thinking of, but they'll, they'll come up with ideas that have no basis in fact. We are, we have to follow the law. We have a lawyer who sits up here, and she doesn't look happy right now, because she's probably wondering why I'm speaking so much. But she's, her job is to make sure we follow the law in everything that we do. And so we, we definitely have restrictions on us, and it's important for you to know what they are, so that when you come to us and you say, these are the things we want you to do, you know you're not asking us to do something that's illegal. I mean, that's not, and, and what happens is when you tell public officials and people who work on our staff and whatever, things that are kind of out there, you've wasted your, you've wasted your vote, because people aren't, they want to tell you the right way to do it, but they don't have time. And so it, it's like, okay, yeah, okay, I believe what you're saying. So be educated in, in the things that you do. The pedestrians on Kellogg Mill, I can tell you, I, Gary and I have talked about that long before this accident, and we are looking into ways to, to deal with that, that bridge. But no pedestrian should ever walk on that bridge, and I, I drive on it all the time, and a couple of times, I can't believe I missed the people, the pedestrians who were walking across the bridge. We had several points about Embry Mill Road at Winding Creek. There is a development that's going in there. A significant amount of road improvements are going to be put in by the developer. The property across the way is going to, you know, it's, 10 acres is not going to be developed at all. But we recognize and have recognized for quite a long time that Winding Creek Road is one of those, one of those major issues. And Ms. Mauer and I, we, we share that road as a boundary between our districts. We talk about it all the time, but we have to get the money and we have to plan. Nothing's been more frustrating for me over the years of dealing with this stuff, and how long it takes for a road project, from the time you think about it till the time you actually do that. The road on, the widening of Courthouse Road was first discussed in the 90s. Okay? So even with money in the bank, it takes years for these things to happen, so another, I'm asking you not only to educate yourself, but to be patient. We have to, we have to go through the law and go through the process that we have, and we are going to do our best to, to, to address the issues you have. You guys came up with, you covered a certain portion of the county, but we have those kinds of issues, Mr. Cohen will tell you, in Wide Water, and we have issues in way out in Hartwood and other areas and stuff. So it's our job to kind of look at the big picture and try and grab, and that's what our study was there to do, was to identify those road projects that, not statistically, with all the hard data we can come up with, all the ones that we need the most work on. I'm hearing my chairman hissing me, so I'm, I'm probably taking too long, so. The, one thing, a gentleman talked about taking control of roads. That's an issue we've been, I've been talking about for 12 years now. It's called devolution, and it is more complicated than you will ever imagine and more expensive than you ever imagined. So if you ever want to have a discussion about that, I'd be glad to do that. And then I also want you to remember that everything that we pay for, it all comes out of the same pot. So the money we spend on teacher salaries comes out of the same money we have to do to spend to pay for the debt that we borrow to fix the roads. So we have to be balanced. That's, that's my only discussion. I don't think this board has been balanced, to be honest, since I've been back. You know, you can't live in a county and just fix one problem. You have to look at all the problems and do your best to kind of even out what you need to do, and it's, it's our job. So you're our conscience. Be here. In the next, just in the next six weeks, we will be taking votes, and you should be taking names on what it's going to take to, to get the funding we need to get, to move forward, so. That's really all I have. Thank you.
Mrs. Mauer.
I don't know. Am I allowed to speak now, Gary? First and foremost, it's been a hard time in the Rock Hill District. We had the microburst a couple of weeks ago, and, and no one's going to convince me it wasn't a tornado that ripped through that neighborhood. If you go in there, you want to see some serious devastation, actually stay out, there's still kind of cutting trees. But, but please, please keep your, your thoughts and prayers for, for all of those neighbors. It was more than $1.5 million worth of just house damage in one neighborhood alone. And so that, that was pretty rough. And I'm sorry I missed the meeting two weeks ago. I had an unavoidable work trip, and my daughter, Alexis, she, she spoke. And there's one thing I'm not going to miss on this board, and that is, I'm leaving in December, and that is being the first to know, or one of the first to know, that we usually get called when tragedy strikes. And, and in addition to that, having to tell my teenage daughter, who's a senior this year, with two other teenagers that I have, that one of their friends has passed away. It's happened too many times in my three and a half years on this board, and I appreciate all of you, I appreciate this board for, and staff for working quickly. She, she submitted the suggestion to her mom to pave that Abil Lake, and it came from her friends, it came from all of you. And I, I tell you, they moved fast on it, didn't they? And so, so it's, it's good to be involved, and she was able to see the impact of being involved. And although I wasn't here, I did watch all of you two weeks ago, and I, I watched you speak, and, and I, I agree, we got to do something about these roads, we got to, we got to clear these trees, we got to clear this brush. That is one side of this issue, and I'm proud to say that I worked with Mr. Dudenheffer on this road study that you guys have been talking about and, and researching. There's another side to this issue. And there was a young lady, and I didn't catch her name, she very astutely said that there are 50 more homes going in on Kellogg Mill Road. Development is also a problem, and development in our rural areas is growing faster than inside our urban services area. And, and you'll hear politicians with all of these smoke and mirrors saying there's nothing we can do about it. We've got the Proffer Bill, and we've got state law, and we've got, you know, our zoning ordinances, but in our rural areas, we have far more control than, than we're telling you. And, and Stafford County has the most liberal zoning laws in all of the Commonwealth. You should know that, because the more people, the more of you we continue to put on these rural back roads, which is where our kids are dying, the more we should be taking responsibility for some of these tragedies, because we pass the zoning laws. We do it. And, and I appreciate all of you not wanting to lay blame, but, but at, at a certain point, we're leaders in this community, and we need to stand up and take action. So there's good news, and there's hope. And if you look at today's agenda, because this is something that we have been talking about, there are two items on this agenda that I, I recommend that you guys get involved in. One of them is the healthy growth strategies. Some are billing it as downzoning. It's, it's, we're going to be talking about whether or not we need to continue with the development on these rural roads that cannot accommodate all of you driving on them to get to school. Healthy growth strategies, or let's stop killing our kids strategies, we might want to call it also. The other one, the other one is the transportation bond referendum is on our agenda today. We can also call that, let's clean up our own mess, bond referendum. I highly recommend that we look at both sides of these issues, the development, and we have all the control and all the power we need to control the development in our rural areas. We're far more constrained in our urban services area, but in the rural areas, we've got, we got quite a bit of power. And, and I hope, and I pray, that you two follow these two issues, because it's these two issues, the balance of how many kids we put on these roads and how we maintain these roads, that is going to protect Stafford's future. And I hope that you ensure that, that we have the moral courage to do something now, because we have to. Thank you. Oh, and Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remove item number one from the consent agenda.
Ms. Shelton.
Well, Ms. Mauer. I can see that we're going to have an exciting evening tonight, and so, yes, there's some things that I agree and don't agree with, but I'd like to defer my comments, but for now, and pull items 14 and 20.
Ms. Bomke.
Yes, my comments are very short, because I think it's all already been said, but I would just like to say I'm, I'm very impressed with everything that you all said. I'm very proud. I'm proud of all of our high school students. You guys are amazing, and I want you to try on this hat when you are of age, 18, that you, too, can be an elected official, because you guys went through today the research that you need to do, the digging down and looking at the, the statistics and, and putting together some solutions, and that's what we do on this board. So don't ever think that, oh, I can't do that, because you can, because you just did the homework for an agenda item that we're going to be talking about later. But I have to say, I'm also frustrated that you all have potholes that were submitted in January and February of this year that have not been filled. I have one that I drove over today, swerved, ran off the road on Manning Drive. Now, they've only had a month, maybe two months to fill that one, cutting over to Forbes Street. So, and Anthony Tuigo in our office here, he has reported that to VDOT. It is a big hole. I actually ran down in it one day just to see how deep it was, but I went very, very slow. And you do have to swerve over. So I think that it is incumbent upon our board, and I'd like to ask the chairman, that we have some kind of a work session with VDOT and their staff, if he could make that, have that conversation with Tom Foley and VDOT, to see if we can understand how they process their complaints. Because if we have things from January or February that are not getting filled, there's a problem. Okay? So I would, Mr. Chairman, if you could take care of that. Also, I would just like to say, I read some statistics on VDOT's page, just about Memorial Day, this will take 15 seconds, over three days, there were 663 crashes in Virginia, 11 fatalities, six were on motorcycles. That's 220 accidents in the Commonwealth per day, 220. Speed, distracted driving, alcohol and drugs, and other things caused it. So we need to all remind ourselves of these things. That's a lot of accidents. So, and then, Mr. Chairman, I would like to pull item number 6, 9, and 18. But again, my final comment is you kids are amazing, and I encourage you, like Ms. Mauer did, to stay involved and be a part of the process. You're doing a great job.
Mr. Snellings.
I'm going to defer, but I stepped out. Ms. Shelton, I think you pulled two items from consent. Which items did you pull?
14 and 20.
14 and 20. Thank you very much. Report of the county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no report at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I would defer any comments except that I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce Julia Holmes, who is our new Assistant Deputy Clerk, working with Sheriff. We've obviously got a new crew over there, but very confident in both of them. Julia started with us last Tuesday, so we're glad to have her, and I just want to introduce her to you.
Welcome, Julia. How are you enjoying your first meeting? You're not a third of the way through yet. Strategic Plan and Other Priority Initiatives, Mr. Foley.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any comments on that, unless there's any questions that the board has, especially given the time.
Okay, let's move to consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve consent, less items 1, 6, 9, 18, 14, and 20? So move. I have a motion and a second. Cast your ballot, cast your votes, tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Ms. Mauer, item number one.
Mr. Snellings, I have just pulled this item so I could abstain, since I did not attend the meeting.
There, here, a motion for number one. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Cast your vote, tally the vote. Motion passes six to zero with one abstention. Ms. Bomke, items number 6, 9, and 18.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On item number six, we have a reference, and I've talked to Mr. Foley about this, and I see Andrea- I see Andrea Light. There's a reference in our revised performance standards in relationship to the encumbrances. And, but we didn't really define what level of encumbrance are we referring to, 100,000, 500,000. So, I thought that we needed to be a little bit more specific, so I brought this up with Mr. Foley yesterday, so.
Thank you, Ms. Bomke. Andrea Light, Budget Director for Stafford County. We looked, when we were looking at encumbrances for 2018 that rolled over into 2019, for the county alone, there were 644 purchase orders across several funds. We look, providing that level of detail to the board doesn't provide so much information, it's almost not valuable to be able to think somebody's going to weigh through 644 purchase orders. We did look at a cutoff of $50,000, so any purchase order that had $50,000, that was about 90% of the overall value of the encumbrances being rolled over, and it was only about 10% of those, so only about 65 purchase orders. So, we're looking at possibly a $50,000 cutoff for that, for those larger purchase orders.
Mr. Chairman, if, if this is a new process, we think that's going to give you some meaningful information about things that are being carried over. If it's a pleasure of the board, we would just suggest that you approve this item. With that language of 50,000 replacing the word large encumbrance, we'll just put encumbrances of 50,000 or over.
Okay, and then this is going to apply to the schools as well?
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, that works for me.
Make out a motion, Ms. Bomke.
Okay, yeah, I'd move for approval of R-19-182 with that additional change with the 50,000 in there for the encumbrance.
I have a motion and a second. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Number nine, Ms. Bomke.
Right, so there was just a reference in this write-up regarding the OPEB, and I just wanted to be very specific, was the write-up, when it says prior years, was it meaning more than one, or is it just this past year?
No, Ms. Bomke, that is fiscal year 2018 results only.
Okay, all right, that's what I thought from a prior meeting that we had, but I just wanted that to be clarified in the write-up. So, I moved, just because I want the public to know that that wasn't prior years, it was just one year.
Mr. Chair, we just change that to prior year instead of
Perfect.
Previous years, just take the S off of there.
Okay, that's great. I'll move for approval of R-19-70.
I have a motion and a second. Cast your vote.
Oh, is it 170? Oh, I'm sorry. R-19-170.
I have a motion and a second. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to nothing. Number 14, Ms. Shelton.
Yes, who's going to be representing this item? My question has to do, I believe it's a triple net lease, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
A triple net lease means that we, whoever the leasing, that would be us, we're going to be paying all the utilities, we have to pay insurance, we have to pay all the costs. Is that correct? So, when I looked at the costs, I didn't see that the total cost of those were included, including the utilities. And so, for the cost for these leases, and I wondered what that cost was. In addition, the second question was, in the agreement, it specifically calls out having a specific insurance, but we're self-insured, so how does that work?
That's a great question. Regards to the utilities, let me take that one first, we do pay the utilities for, for those suites over there. It is less than what we would be paying. I think one of the examples given in here was the Able Lake facilities. So, there is, there is a net decrease in our utility costs that we have there. In terms of the insurance, I apologize, I'm, I'm not familiar specifically with that. Certainly, we can get back to you with some more information, but it, I would assume that this is the same insurance we're currently carrying on the other units over there currently. But I'm, I'm not aware of all the specifics of that. Be happy to get some more information, come back and speak on that if needed.
I think I'd like to know, as a board member, all the other cases where we have other insurance that we're buying, because I made the assumption all along that we were self-insured, and so that was the first time I saw some place that we're actually getting it. And I understand that we already are leasing some, so we have a partial year, and it looks like that we're going to be up in year five. And so, I understand what we're doing. I, I'm not sure I'd hold it up unless other board members feel like this, but I would like you to come back and tell us what the total cost of that is.
Sure.
Because when we, in 2020, whatever year five is, 2021,
2021, September.
When the whole thing is up for a lease, I know that we're going to go out for a new contract, but I just wonder, given what we're doing with downtown Stafford and other things, that we may be considering a different option, if we know what the total cost is.
Sure, and we, and we specifically timed that in, in terms of with the, to coincide with the existing leases over there, so that we wouldn't be incurring any, any more effectively longer term. Of course, we're aware of with downtown Stafford and the potential possibilities there, and so is this, this landlord, we've discussed that with them. So, they're aware that there is the opportunity at some point that we may be leave, looking at something else differently. So, we feel comfortable in terms of the timing, right now, where downtown Stafford is, and what our immediate two, two-year needs are here, that this is, this is a good move in terms of the space and the cost. Certainly, if, I'm happy to come back and give you more information on any other cost analysis or insurance you want.
I would like that. With that being said, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Foley?
Maybe just to clarify one point, the county is self-insured for health insurance. We have our own pool where the claims go in to pay our claims, I mean, where the premiums go in to pay claims. We're not self-insured for general liability and other types of insurance. So, we do bid that out and have a competitive rate, but that would just apply to this new space.
Thank you, sir. With that being said, and you bringing back the additional costs at another time, I'd like to move to approve R-19-138.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to nothing. Number 18, Ms. Bomke.
Yes, so I am concerned about the way we have this resolution formed and sending it down to the Planning Commission. From, I did, I did miss the meeting on the Beehive discussion, but, you know, I'm looking at my own home that is in an R1 area, and I could have four Beehives, and I, I'm on a little bit of a, like a third of an acre. And I talked to a friend who actually has Beehives out in the agricultural area, and one hive can generate 10 to 60,000 bees. And if you look at the, the chart that was put in here by our, some of our comparative counties, excluding Prince William, you know, a lot of these other counties, Chesterfield, no more than two bee boxes, and I, I don't want to belabor this, Henrico doesn't permit it at all. Spotsylvania just says home occupation with accessory setbacks. I don't know, I feel like this is way too gracious when it comes to Beehives, and I think it should be either one or two at the absolute max, if you are in, have 10,000 square feet.
Mr. Chairman? I, I believe, and we'll get a reading on it, but I believe that our background package calls it A1 and A2 only, doesn't refer to any R zoning. In addition, I thought 10,000 square feet, and I, this is not my thing, you guys know, 10,000 square feet, isn't that like two acres or something like that? Isn't it like, like a lot bigger than, a lot size that you would describe, Ms. Bomke?
Yeah, but I think the way I read item number 20, it says R1, suburban residential.
Mr. Harvard, would you give us some clarification, please, sir?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposed resolution referring this to the Planning Commission is as what Supervisor Bomke says, would allow it in the residential zones where, where they're currently not permitted. They're currently permitted in the agricultural zones, A1 and A2 zoning districts.
Correct.
10,000 square feet is roughly a quarter of an acre, it's a little bit smaller than a quarter of an acre, answering Supervisor Shelton's question. And the draft ordinance does allow the Planning Commission to make modifications that it deems necessary, but certainly if the board's inclined, we can modify the referring ordinance to reduce the number of bee boxes, if that's the recommendation of the board.
Mr. Dudenheffer.
Ms. Bomke, we had a lengthy discussion about this, and, and all your concerns were expressed, so at the, at our committee meeting. The, I think the consensus at the time was, but two of us have received letters from enthusiasts who do this, and I don't, I'm not a, I don't know anything about raising bees or whatever. I know I have a lot of ground bees at my house that I have trouble getting rid of. But, but the point was, was to just send it to the Planning Commission to give it a full hearing, and not use, you know, subjective type, oh, man, bees, I don't want them around my house. So, it wasn't meant, it, it isn't meant as a directive to them, it was all meant as, send it down there, let them investigate it.
Right, I understand where you're coming from, but I, I think that if we send it down there with the four Beehives for R1, we're kind of stating that that's past our committee level, and that's something that we might be recommending, but, I mean, I would be a lot more comfortable with one or two. Because I can tell you, any of us that live in subdivisions, you would not want four Beehives in your backyard, at your neighbor's backyard.
I mean, I live in a subdivision, and I don't know if I'd want them or not.
I can guarantee you, I would not.
I, I just think we, I just think we need to send it and let them do the investigation, that's all I'm, I'm asking. I don't want to approve or not approve anything, I just want to get facts.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, now that I'm embarrassed, because I was completely wrong about the other things, I do want to second what Mr. Dudenheffer is saying, because one of the things that we talked about significantly was the value of bees, and the issues that we're having within not just our country, but the entire world, with the decrease in that population. So, I, I wanted to go, I support the idea of sending it to the Planning Commission to do the research, to come back with not just our feelings about things, and I'm not saying that about you, ma'am, but just, not just that, but bring us back the facts. What is the right thing to do? Because even though we do have a list of what our peer communities are doing, we don't know that the peer communities are doing the right thing either. So, I think that sending it to the Planning Commission to do the research, to advise us on what, you know, options are best for Stafford County is the right thing to do.
Put that in the form of a motion, Ms. Shelton. Is that a motion?
Yes, sir, that's a motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second? A motion, a second, cast your vote.
No, you didn't ask for any discussion.
Oh, there is no discussion. Correct me if I'm wrong, County Attorney, there is no discussion on consent, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, this, this item has been pulled, so it's no longer a consent.
Is there any discussion?
I'll just say that I will support this, but when it comes back, there won't be any four Beehives with my support. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, the record will show the conversation.
I think the record will show a lot of conversation. You're probably going to need to hire five or six denographers to get through this. I would remind the board that it is quarter of five, and we're still on consent. So, I would ask that we kind of move things along just a little bit, not that I don't like the conversation, but just a reminder. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion carries seven to zero. Number 20, Ms. Shelton.
I'll make it fast. On item number 20, one of the options or the value of this particular contract is to be able to cover the VDOT right-of-way. And so, we've heard lots of discussions about the mowing of the VDOT right-of-way, and we're putting it in that contract, and I wanted to know, if we could take in consideration the information that these students have presented to us for those opportunities, and wrap those into that contract. Not saying that we have to do every VDOT right-of-way, but I thought it was interesting that that contract has VDOT right-of-way listed in it.
So, is that a motion? Are you making a motion?
We currently maintain our Gateway right-of-way, and we have a budget of $100,000, and that pretty much covers the entire year in those Gateway items. If you wanted to add additional clearing, it would be additional funds that would come currently from the transportation fund.
Okay, so they've already been defined. All right, you've answered that, thank you very much, sir. I'd like to move for item 20.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion? Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes, Mr. Cohen, I assume you're voting yes on this?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to nothing. Unfinished business, item 21, County Administration Discussion of Possible Healthy Growth Strategies.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Michael Smith, I'm the Deputy County Administrator, and we'll be talking about a subject we've discussed a number of times.
The same comment applies to that one as well.
If you could put it on the slide, say thank you. So, we have provided a white paper with an enormous amount of research on the status of the growth in Stafford County, the history of the actions taken by the board over the years, the comprehensive plan, the cost of growth, a variety of strategies that we could use to manage the growth. We also completed a thorough public process to get input from the, the public, and the results have been given to the board, although a large amount of information is included with this package and throughout the last few months. The, it basically comes down to a, a discussion of three basic items. The information, like I said, leads to three main points for consideration. Does the board, would the board like to adopt a change in lot size, to decrease the number of future homes to be built in the rural areas of the county? Would the board like to adopt incentives for both rural land conservation and the developed and the targeted growth areas without a change in lot size? These could include transfer development rights, purchase, and purchase of development rights, assistance with voluntary conservation, and other possible strategies. Or, would the, the board like to adopt a change in lot sizes coupled with the incentives that I mentioned, which maintain the value of the owner's land, provide a number of developing units which could be sold equal to the amount before the light lot size amendment? If the board chooses this option, staff is prepared to discuss the strategies outlined in the white paper. In order to gain board direction and move this process forward, we would bring something back to the board as early as next board meeting to begin this action. If the board chooses option two, there's a lot of calculations that need to be done to determine the number of lots that could be transferred from the sending areas to the receiving areas. We recommend that we put together a, a committee of, made up of board members, Planning Commission members, and some landowners and developers, to help develop the regulations for this program. If the board decides to do that, we could bring back something next, at the next meeting that would identify the, the committee that we recommend. And then if the board chooses option three, this would also require a committee to make up, come up with the rules for the transfer development rights, and, and we could discuss that further as well. So, we're prepared to move forward with either coming back with a lot size change, or come back with a committee to begin to develop the recommendations and regulations for a transfer of development rights expansion into other areas of the county. And so, with option one, it would simply be the lot size, with option two or three, we would begin with the committee, and we'll take board direction. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Smith? Discussion?
Well, I guess I'll make a motion. I mean, the, I understand, I understand very deeply the concern about reducing values, and I think option number three kind of gets at the heart of the both. We can't keep developing in three-acre lot sizes in our rural areas. We don't have the infrastructure, fire and rescue's not getting out there, we, we, we just can't support it. The buses, there's, there is so much infrastructure that is necessary to continue the development path that we have been on. And, and it's having devastating consequences throughout our community. However, I also am concerned about the values and the retirement accounts that are caught up in a lot of these, these, you know, parcels of land. There are people who are concerned about their pocketbook, and they should be, and so I like option number three. They keep the value of the land, they're able to, you know, They keep the value of the land, they're able to, you know, transfer those development rights. I understand that, that there are some details that we're going to need to flesh out on that, but at the same time, I, I think we kind of get the best of both worlds in that. And so I would like to make a motion for option number three.
Second.
I have a motion for option number three by Ms. Mauer. Ms. Bomke, I think you were first with a second discussion.
I'd like to make a substitute motion.
Ms. Shelton wants to make a substitute motion.
I'd like to make a substitute motion for option three. My reason for option three, I'm sorry.
She just, she just motioned.
I just said, I'm, I'm misspoke, I'm sorry, option two. Thank you for giving me that look, Mr. Cavalier, it's like, what? And so my reason for going for option two is you know that Stafford County has a huge problem with broadband. One of the challenges that we have with.
We gotta have, we gotta have a second first.
Oh, yeah, man, I am so ready to talk about this.
Second, Mr. Cohen.
Okay, thank you.
Now, discussion.
Thank you. The reason I'm, sorry, guys, I'm just too excited about it. The broadband, one of our problems that we have with broadband right now, and I know that so much because we've been working to do individual door-to-door surveys, is the density requirements to be able to bring in broadband. We don't have the density requirements in the rural area on three acre lots. And that's one of the reasons why it's not there, because it's not cost-effective. With the consideration of changing lot sizes to making them larger, because we didn't, we're not saying making them smaller, we're talking about making them larger, then by doing so, we're going to condemn those individuals to not be able to have it. That's why I choose option two.
Ms. Mauer.
Okay. So we're talking about density. We're not necessarily talking about lot sizes because we still have the cluster ordinance in some capacities. We can also reduce lot sizes, but still keep the density. The biggest issue is we are allowing one house per three acres. And that density, which is different than lot size, is, is, we just don't have the infrastructure. And I appreciate, I appreciate the broadband, the one infrastructure item that, that this might inhibit, but we have all the other infrastructure items that we need to take into consideration. Roads, fire and rescue, schools, buses, you know, all these other services. And, I mean, because we, these houses are so far out, we literally had a baby die in a fire because fire and rescue couldn't get out there. We need to start opening these people up to so much devastation and risk and start looking at it. We have the most liberal rural zoning policies in the Commonwealth. And it's, it's leading to issues. We can't afford to provide all the services. And while I appreciate the broadband argument, and I think with 5G and being on telephone poles, the technology is coming, we've got to look at all of the infrastructure as a whole. And I don't think that we can support the infrastructure and continue to maintain the density that we're doing.
Any other discussion? Mr. Cohen?
Oh, go ahead. Dudenheffer.
Mr. Dudenheffer calls in.
I believe that option two, we end up with not only the same growth we're having or the same level of growth we have in the rural areas, we are going to significantly increase the growth in the urban services area. So instead of adjusting our growth, we end up with both. And it's, and it's a disaster. It, it will end up, I mean, we're already in a disastrous situation the way we're handling it now. And I think any program that incentivizes building in the urban services area without a requisite change in how we deal with growth in the rural area is a recipe for failure.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes, I agree with option number two. I think that, first of all, one of the things that I have continually said is that the, we need, none of the real options, two definitely does, three slightly, puts growth where we want it. And that's where we want it, in the TDR, in the particular, you know, area particularly, and in our UDA. My problem with option number three is that it puts the onus on one set of our population for decisions that we're not there, theirs to make. So if we go with option number three, we're saying to people, we're downzoning your property and then if you want it back, you can try to get into a TDR as opposed, and, you know, that's the way it's going to be. I don't think that's equitable. I think that, quite honestly, and I've talked to the commissioner of revenue, we will, the, when you downzone, those people's property will go down in value, which means the amount of tax dollars raised will go down, which means we have to raise taxes on the people in, oh, gosh, the urban service area. So I just think that option number two gives more incentives, it is more equitable than putting the onus on people. There are many individuals out in the rural areas that would love to do a TDR. However, the, we haven't really pursued that as an avenue yet. They have, we've seen that there's been a great interest in doing PDRs, however, we do not fund it as fully as it could be. So without that, we can use the market to do it. So I think option two is the most equitable for all the residents of the county.
Ms. Bomke.
So, this is, this is really, really difficult. I guess, where's Mr. Harvey? Oh, Mr. Harvey and Mr. Smith. Especially Mr. Harvey, you have been in Stafford County for many, many years as our planning and zoning director. And I'm not going to put you on the spot and ask you, you know, what your thoughts are. But, you know, each board member has, some of them have made various comments and the, your interpretation of the way we have everything constructed right now, is that a true statement that we would be downzoning under item number three and then they have to buy it back if they want to do TDRs? Is that going to end up being an onerous situation for the farmers out in the rural areas?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Bomke, the option three is essentially changing the density for the rural areas. So people would potentially have fewer lots that they could put on their property in the future. And in exchange, they would be granted a certain number of development rights for their property. They could choose to sell those development rights instead of building lots. Or they could choose not to sell their development rights, that's their individual choice. Through the transfer of development rights program, someone could sell their development rights to another person who could sell them to a developer who would build a project in our targeted growth area. So the option three looks at a direct correlation between slowing down or slowing down development in the rural area and potentially facilitating more development in the targeted growth area.
So do you feel that we are penalizing our farmers under the item number three?
Supervisor Bomke, part of it's going to go back to how we set up the program.
Correct.
Is there enough incentives in that program that people, when they sever their development rights, or we, we determine how many development rights they have and they want to sell them, is there going to be a market for them to sell them, number one? Is it going to be, number two, a reasonable price that they think is a return on investment compared to where they are today? And then, number three is, once they sell them, where are they going to go? Are they going to go in our targeted growth areas? And are we going to set up our zoning in the targeted growth areas that it matches what we, our goals are for a comprehensive plan?
Right. So I'm not convinced that item number two is going to solve our issues out in the rural area. So that's where I'm kind of perplexed.
Any other discussion? Mr. Cavalier.
Well, I, I guess I don't get it too much on this, but I don't see as any of these things being the panacea, to tell you the truth. I think we're, we're rather short-sighted here and I think that if, if you're looking really down the road, I don't think you're going to get the younger generations wanting to buy all these houses with large, extremely large slots. Three acres is a, is a lot. Millennials nowadays, they want to be in a place where they can, you know, get to work in a short amount of time, have, have amenities around them, be able to work, live and play in the same area. And I, I'm a big firm believer in the town center concept like that and that we're in here, we are even beginning to address that. And so, you know, I, I don't, I guess if I'm going to pick one of the three, that I'd probably go with number two at this point, but not really that thrilled about any of them.
Any other discussion? I guess I've got the last word. Believe me, I have wrestled with this one. I represent a very rural area. I own twenty, about 25 acres in A1, so whatever decision's made is going to affect me financially. And it has been a tough decision for me. If you'd asked me a week ago, I had a different answer than what I had today, have today. But I take a ride through Hartwood about once a week and I see every week new foundations being laid, more cement trucks traveling. Every time I see a cement truck, I say, there's another home. And that's basically what it is. So even though I have wrestled with this, I, I think I've made a decision that I, I will support option number three. I think it's the only option that's fair to everyone, fair to the landowner because they will have an option of fully realizing the value of their property if they go with a TDR. Or if, if not, they just sell it out, a six acre lot. But I, I think we need to do something. I think we need to move forward and I'll support option number three. With that said, we have a motion, a substitute motion for option number two. Please cast your votes.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Can I ask that we put those options back up on the screen?
Certainly. Can we get them back up, Mike? I'm waiting on Mr. Cavalier. Are there any other questions for staff? With that, we're voting for the substitute motion, option number two. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. The motion fails five to two. We're back to option number three. We have a motion and a second. Is any further discussion? Cast your vote. Tally the vote. The motion passes. Mr. Cohen, are you voting? Thank you. The motion passes five to two. Mr. Harvey, what's the next step here with this? This doesn't take effect immediately, I'm sure.
Mr. Chairman, no, it does not. As Mr. Smith mentioned, we will come back to the board at your next meeting to talk about steps moving forward specifically needing to establish a committee to work through especially the TDR process, to understand, to make sure that we have the right incentives in the TDR program for the landowners to try to make it match the spirit and intent that they will be kept somewhat whole. And also to ensure that the TDR program would be successful and that people would not continue to want to subdivide lots unless they had a family need or some other source of need. So again, this would be something that's probably going to take place over an extended period of time to work out the details. And then it has to go through a public hearing process with the planning commission and ultimately back with the board. So it'll involve zoning code changes as well as amendments to the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we will, since this is a top strategic priority, we will come back to you also with a schedule and it will trump some other things since it's at the top of your list and it's such a significant issue. So we'll bring some more details back to you.
Good, thank you. Okay, just for board's information, we're going to take new business items and the closed session and move them to the end of the agenda because of time constraints. Item number 22, economic development, consider rescinding or amending a memorandum of understanding with Acquia Capital LLC, the Acquia district. Mr. Holden.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have a brief presentation for your background and also the public as well. I'll remind you that this is regarding a memorandum of understanding, or an MOU, with Mosaic Partners for the development of Acquia Town Center. The existing MOU has been in place since 2015. It provides $6.25 million in future, what we call incremental tax revenues, or ITR, as an incentive to develop that property. That existing MOU, as you may recall, is based on a net present value, therefore has a, what we commonly refer to as an escalator, meaning that the 6.25 is actually a net present value as of January 1, 2016, meaning nominal values or average day that that number is going up. That incremental tax revenue includes future tax revenues on real estate sales, meals and personal property tax. The incentive is paid at 75% on an annual basis until the full amount is reached or, or 15 years, whichever is first. As I've explained before, that development agreement has some concerns. It has no definitive development project defined. It has no performance standards and it has no timeline. And as this board's discussed, it's been a issue for the community for a couple of years. So the board asked that staff revisit an agreement, amend an agreement with the developer. And we have done so over the past sixty or so days and come up with consensus on an agreement, but there are some items that we have not met consensus with developer. First, I wanted to explain the consensus that we've come to. In fact, the developer themselves recommended the removal of that so-called escalator clause, meaning the $6.25 million return to revenues is in nominal values. We also agreed that in interest of getting something done, we would define some sort of a development project and that is 15,000 square feet be built and within three years. If that does not happen, this proposed MOU terminates automatically. We also adjusted the timeline of which the incremental tax revenues are paid. Instead of 75% for the entire period, the developer proposed and we agreed that they pay 75% on an annual basis until half of that is met and then 50% until the other half is met or the 15 years, whichever is first. So there's a, a risk to them that they perhaps would not reach that total amount. We also agreed on a number of issues regarding cleaning up the site. First of all, we agreed that we proposed and discussed the removal of the fence near the apartments and mowing of the grass within 60 days of this signed amendment. And that's in that area there in red. That's an area that currently has a temporary fence and there's quite long grass in it. And as I said, we've agreed that they would remove that fence and mow the grass and keep it maintained at six inches or less. Also, we agreed that other stockpiles or asphalt, concrete, stone and brick, et cetera, around the site would be removed. We discussed and they agreed to properly grade the southeast portion of the site to prevent soil erosion and to stabilize the, that area within 90 days. And that is that area there highlighted in blue. Other areas of agreement was to maintain all stormwater management facilities and replace the panels, the vacant, the empty panels on the main sign at the entrance. As I mentioned, there are some items that we did not come to agreement on. First is, it was our understanding that the board wanted to clean up the site, so we approached the developers to demolish the site where it's a temporarily constructed site, as shown in the picture below. Recognizing that that, there is some investment there, staff suggested, and this is a typo, the agreement actually proposes 100. the agreement actually proposes 100 and 20 days, 180 days, excuse me.
There's the words saying 90, but the number says 180.
Okay. Yes, we, all right. The intent was longer, 180 days for demolition of the site or to initiate a building permit and complete construction of the, of a building on that site within 18 months of the submission of the permit. So it gives a chance to get something done on that current site. However, the developer continued to insist that they would prefer adding a sign, opaque sign around that area, and allow 120 days to add that screening or initiate a building permit.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask what our thought process was on the demolition of the footers that are in there for that 15,000-square-foot building right now? What, if, if they did put the opaque fencing around it, and I'm told they've spent up to a million dollars, I think there's water lines running underneath plumbing and electrical done there, too. But, so what's, what's our rationale for demolishing that?
Again, it was our understanding that the board wanted the site cleaned up, so the first discussions were around frankly just demolishing it and cleaning it up. However, in talking with them, we decided from a staff perspective that to give them the timeline that was proposed there, 180 days to either submit a permit and then 18 months to construct something on the site, give them the opportunity to continue, to use that investment that's in the ground, but at the same time, get something done, because if the site were, if it were just screened, give, in 120 days, or initiate a permit in 120 days, by the end of this agreement, if nothing happened there, the county would be left with, well, not the county, but the, the site would be left with undeveloped piece of foundation, a screener on it, and no incremental tax revenue. The alternative being initiate something, give them some reasonable time to get something permitted and started on that site, or demolish it and do something else on the site. That was our thinking.
And you are aware that they built that site for the Rite Aid building at, at the time when the Harris Teeter deal was still on the, being considered, and so because of the, the way they were gonna lay out that entire site, it made sense for them, they were gonna put the Harris Teeter in the back where the movie theater is, they were gonna put the Rite Aid up in front, which is their agreed-upon remedy with the situation with the pharmacy. But now the Harris Teeter deal is no longer, they're gonna have to come up with another site plan probably, that's not gonna look exactly like that. And so I guess what I'm saying is that they, this may not fit into the, the new plan that they have, and I'm just wondering why we're, why we wouldn't allow a little bit more flexibility here.
Again, I, our direction was to, was not specific, so we came up with what we thought was an alternative versus demolishing that site versus giving them some time to do something at that site before demolishing it. So we weren't, so the, the county was not left with a site that did not have the development. But I understand that they have invested in that property, and again, part of this process here is to ask for your guidance, I guess.
Well, I, I actually led the charge on the cleaning up the site. I mean, that's for, first and foremost, the thing that we can most influence at this point, but no way did I suggest this. And I, I see, don't see anything in this new MOU with regard to the roadways within the site and the, the really poor condition of those roads. Has that been addressed, or am I just missing it?
It has not been addressed.
And why is that?
Frankly, I was not aware of the conditions of the roads in, in disrepair. I mean, I've been there and I've seen them, but I didn't know the, I personally didn't.
They're deplorable, is what they are. And so if we do, if we do approve an MOU, we will have to put that in. That's, that's a, I mean, if anybody's driven up in there, I mean, that'd be the first thing, well, one of the very first things that you notice is that you hit pothole after pothole after pothole up there and almost break your axle doing so. So, yeah, I wish we could've had some more involvement in this, but I certainly would suggest that, that be in any future agreement.
Mr. Chairman, one thing about the roads, I guess the assumption was that if the site actually develops in those three years, the roads will be part of the infrastructure that will have to go in in order for it to be a marketable property or, or to have business activity. So we can certainly go in whichever direction.
But the road is a, is an issue now. If people drive through there to get to the pharmacy and to go to the office building, and you have to traverse those roads that are in there that are in very poor condition, and so even on the outer edges, close to the, to the outbuildings right there on Route One, they, they have to be addressed. That's, that's a non-starter for me. Can't wait until the site gets developed.
Any issue putting the roads in the?
Mr. Chairman, this is, you know, this is either a rescinded agreement, or it's got terms in it that you all are satisfied with, and the resolution you're gonna have in front of you is gonna say, you'll put a deal on the table and they'll either take it or it's rescinded. So I think there's no way that probably that staff could've come up with everything that you all might be thinking of, and maybe this is a miss, but we would be looking for that direction and then an amendment to that so that we can put it on the table or, or it gets rescinded if they don't agree.
Okay. Ms. Mall.
Is this their definition of an opaque fence?
I don't believe so.
Okay. What, what is the definition of opaque screening?
I asked for some demonstration of that, did not receive them, but we will certainly do that if the board wishes.
Okay.
There were three other items that were still in, without consensus, if I could proceed.
Please, go ahead.
Second was on securities. Given, given the nature of this incentive agreement and development project and the history of it, staff requested that securities be updated using updated current engineering cost estimates and that they be in the form of a letter of credit or cash. Our current securities policy for development allows the use of bonds except for erosion and sediment controls. Again, given the nature of this incentive and the history of this, our recommendation was to go a little beyond the current policy and have the cash requirement. They would like to retain their, the right to use bonds exclusively. Third, the original agreement included the return of incremental tax revenues, and those were listed in the original agreement as real estate, meals, and personal property. A revised version of this amendment from the developer suggested the addition of transit occupancy tax and merchant capital tax. We were given no direction by this board to include additional tax revenues, so we took those out. Mosaic did ask that, they felt that that was the spirit of the original MOU, but again, as I've explained to this board before, this original agreement has a lot of details that were, were not clear. So that was another issue of non-consensus between the parties. And finally, successors or assignees are generally referred to transferability, that is the transferability of this agreement. In my experience in development, most incentives for the development of a property are on the property. We've included a provision that requires Mosaic to sign or terminate the agreement upon the transfer of the property. Mosaic had drafted language that included that they would be able to retain the incremental tax revenue payments even if they sold the property. Again, our intent would be that this revenues would be with the development of the project and the property, not their suggestion. So at this point, I'm, we're looking, here's the four main points.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure I heard you right. I wanna, I wanna peel back that a little bit. So on this, Mosaic would like to potentially sell the property, and the developer, the new developer develops it, but we continue to pay Mosaic. Is that what I'm hearing?
That was what they were-
That was their, so, so how does the developer have incentive of developing the property if Mosaic is getting the cash?
I don't know.
You don't have to answer. I'm just, I wanted to make sure I, I, I heard that right, 'cause I keep being told what great guys these are. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, in the, in the interest of time, if, if we wanted to go through these and say, you disagree with Mosaic on this, we can say that the language that we have already drafted is gonna stay like it is. So this transferability, the one you just spoke of, is written the way I think that you're thinking it should be written. And so if there's agreement on that one, we could move through these others and see where we are, and see if we could come to some conclusion about a final agreement. And, you know, even if we've kinda worked our way up, the Mosaic would like transient occupancy tax included in the revenues that they would generate some money on, when that was never part of what we ever had in place. So perhaps some direction on that one, if, if it's, if the board wants to do it that way.
On the screen now are the four points of some direction. The difference is, at this point, there's four points of differences.
What's the timeline?
What do we, are we up against a time restraint here?
No, sir, we can take as long as, as a board would like to take. You set the original timeline at 60 days, so if you'd like to delay this, that, that's certainly fine.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Cavalier.
I, I, I'm prepared to act on this today, because the longer we put this off, the longer the site is in disrepair. And if we can, we can do something, we need to do it. That's when the clock starts ticking on the, on the cleanup of the site, and that's really the best that we can do as a government entity right now. We can't bring in the new businesses. We have no control over that, but let's, let's iron something out.
All right, let's move along. Start with the first one and work your way down.
Well, the first one is, would the board like to allow screening in lieu of a timeline to demolish the site of the, of the, where the Rite Aid was going to be, or as we proposed, a timeframe to initiate a building permit and complete construction in a, in a time after that permit was submitted?
What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
In the other slide, you said opaque fencing, and this is screening. So which one is it? Screening, I thought, was the green stuff that we don't like.
No, the, the, the agreement says opaque.
Okay.
I'm not sure if it says fencing or screening, I'll have to look at it.
Yeah.
The, the word opaque, I know, is used.
All right.
What's the will of the board?
I would agree to the current wording to give him, giving them the option to be able to screen it or build.
Any objections? Okay. Where, did you understand that, Mr. Holden?
Clarify that.
You mixed staffs and Mosaics.
The two suggestions are that, our staff suggestion was to give them, again, I think that's a typo on the slide there, let's say 180 days to demolish the site or initiate a building permit within that timeframe, and then once that building permit is submitted, have 18 months for completion of that construction. Their suggestion is a certain number of days to add opaque screening and initiate a permit.
You're right, Ms. Mall, I did. I would recommend that we go with A.
Let me ask the county attorney, do we need to vote on each one of these?
No, staff can take direction on them and ultimately would end up in the final resolution.
Okay. Is everybody in agreement on that one? Let's move forward.
Securities is a matter of whether the board would-
Clarify what the agreement was.
It was option A.
And just to clarify- Right. Because the agreement has, like Ms. Mall said, written 90 and 180, it's just wrong.
It's clear that you're, you're going with staff's version of this.
Yes.
That's correct. Yes, sir, that was a typo.
The second was on securities. Staff recommended going a little bit beyond and asking for cash versus bond or letter of credit, only because of the nature of this project and the history.
Any comment, who wants to stay with staff recommendation?
Is that kind of a, is it, I don't have any real feel for it. Is that onerous? I mean, are coming up, do they have to actually come up with the cash?
Yes, that would be a cash-
And how much would that be?
I believe the estimate, I'll defer, was, I recall, and I would, $400,000 being the figure, but I'd have to defer.
Yeah, they wouldn't have to come up with the cash. It's a letter of credit or cash, that's what we already require for ENS, but state code allows for a letter of credit, cash, or bond. However, since this is an agreement, we could ask for something more stringent to better protect the county. Letter of credit is much easier to pull for the county than a bond. A bond, it would be impossible to pull, since they've already pulled their, their site plan, there would be nothing that we could tell the, the bank that we had to do even if, with the ENS, and so a bond would be very difficult to pull.
Well, and given their cash flow situation that they told us at the DIA, they probably don't have the cash, they're gonna have to go to their bank to get the cash. I mean, the letter of credit, I'm fine with the letter of credit.
Yes.
Cash or a letter of credit?
Okay, is everybody in a consensus, cash or a letter of credit?
Which is staff recommendation.
Next item.
The second item was, again, the original agreement did not include transit occupancy tax or merchant capital tax. Given the nature, the, the developer's argument was, again, they had a certain prospect in mind that was not in the agreement, but now they're not sure what will be in there, so they believe the spirit was most of the revenue.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Maybe we can make this a little quicker. The, back to the screening or the demolition or building permit and completion of the building within two years, they insisted that it have the screening and not have the demolition or building, and if they did not get that, they would not sign the agreement. And so if that is the will of the board, you may just wanna go straight to the rescind, but it's up to you.
I think given the nature of, of negotiation, I'd say we continue with the rest of the terms and just see how that plays out. So the question is whether to add a, a revenue that wasn't included in the original agreement.
Mr. Chairman, is it not true that for transient occupancy tax, you have to tie that directly to an increase in hotel rooms?
It's paid as a result of the hotel rooms.
So we would have to have some way to show that any develop they did tied directly to an improvement in hotel rooms?
In, in that, in the development.
Okay.
And that can be done-
By building a hotel?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Ms. Mall.
Yeah, and I have another question on that. With the transient occupancy tax, a certain percentage of it goes to our, our tourism fund. The calculations that we have, are we in jeopardy of violating those? Okay.
Cindy, this is your district, we're looking at you.
Oh, I'm definitely, I'm definitely gonna go with the, the board's recommendations, or, excuse me, the staff's recommendation for A. That's my-
Everybody okay with that?
I'm good.
Okay.
And finally, on transferability.
No.
No. No.
Mr. Chairman, we, we also heard from Supervisor Cavalier that he believes that the roads in the development should be paved, and I just wanted to be clear, all the roads within the development should be paved is, is the direction.
Well, not necessarily all repaved, just put in some sort of language that makes them in a good condition, 'cause right now it's, they're not in good condition.
So maybe you wanna bring them up to a certain level?
Well, bring them up to the original standard, I guess, that we had when they first built it, no more, no less.
I'm looking to Mr. Smith about whether we can, that's defined enough. This will be the last thing, I think we just need to-
Basically, just bring them back to their original form.
The original standard is a pretty high standard if they expect to be digging it up in the next two or three years, because they'll be removing a lot of stormwater pipe and a lot of water and sewer pipe, and the original- And the original standard is a pretty high standard for a parking lot.
Okay.
So, it may be repairs...
I would say, not so much the parking lots aren't an issue, because there's no one there parking, but there are people driving through there, and those are the keys that I'd like to focus on. And whether it's making sure all the potholes are repaired, that's the major thing, to tell you the truth. You drive through there and you bust your axle.
We'll come up with some language to make sure that the roads are passable.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Shelton?
I just was going to amend that by suggesting that the issue is really the potholes going to the existing businesses and going through that. So, we don't need to modify or improve all the roads, as Mr. Cavalier said, but those, definitely those ones that people traverse now to go to the existing businesses.
Well, the road that runs along the outside of the property, like adjacent to Carlos Kelly's and McDonald's and all those, that's on the outer edge, and that is a heavily traversed road, because people use that. So, it's got to be, I'd say all.
If I may, we'll clarify travel lanes and make sure the travel lanes are...
Yeah.
Is that...
Is that it, Mr. Holden?
I believe so. So, we'll make amendments? What are we going to do?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that the board move for R 19-186 with the direction given to staff. And I would note that if Mosaic is not willing to execute the agreement, this gives the county administrator the ability to give them notice that the board has rescinded, if the board so chooses. But this would incorporate all of the actions I believe we discussed today.
Well, so, are you saying that if they do not sign, then it goes to automatic rescission, then not back to us for a vote?
If the board would like to give that direction, they can. At the last meeting, that was the direction we were given, so the resolution was drafted in that manner. But if the board would like it to come back to the board, if they are unwilling to execute, we can do that as well.
I think we should make that decision after...
What happens if they come back with a counteroffer, so to speak? I mean, this is a negotiation. I understand, this is not my favorite subject. But, you know, if they come back with something that approaches what we want to do, at least we ought to have a chance to say yes or no.
Yeah.
I don't, I mean, if they categorically say, nope, we're not doing it, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it's over. But if they have some negotiation, then we should at least give it consideration. Shouldn't be administratively...
And give them, give them just until the next meeting to do that. But I don't want to automatically rescind without some thought process and a formal vote from this body.
Yeah, I agree. It needs to come back to the board, but hopefully, they can do that between now and the next meeting.
Because that's the direction, the timeline would be good to put in there.
Yeah.
Or we can stretch it out to the vacation and go home and not worry about it.
I'd like to move for R 19-186 to amend, and then have that brought back to the board at our next meeting. Is that correct? I'm sorry, pardon me, Supervisor Shelton, I would recommend the board just give staff the direction that's already given. We can take that direction. There really is no motion on the table at this time, because it sounds like we're going to have to come back. Okay, okay, all right.
Okay, Mr. Holden, you said?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Item number 20, Parks and Recreation Community, oh, I'm sorry, 23, planning and zoning consider amending and reordaining County Code, Chapter 28, regarding transfer of development rights.
Mr. Chairman, this is an item that's been discussed previously at the board level. Last time, there were some questions that the board asked from staff to come back with regard to the number of properties that the county owns within Crowsnest Harbor. We own a number of lots in Crowsnest Harbor, five in total. There was another question about how many development rights potentially could be yielded on the county's properties. That's approximately seven. There's one parcel that the county owns that may not be eligible for a development right, unless this code amendment was approved. Generally speaking, the TDR program, as it's currently set up for this area, stipulates that you must have at least 20 acres of land to qualify for transferred development rights, with the exception of properties designated as parkland in our comprehensive plan, more specifically, the Crowsnest Harbor area. So, this proposed amendment would allow lots in Crowsnest Harbor to essentially be guaranteed one development right. And I'll be happy to answer any additional questions that the board might have.
Any questions for Mr. Harvey? Okay. Bring it back to the board. This is, Shelton, is this your district?
It's kind of both of ours, but I'm going to take it. I'd like to move for R 18-196.
Supervisor Shelton, that would be O 19-25.
19-25, yeah.
That's the ordinance of the resolution?
This is item number 23.
I'm looking at it on the screen. So, it's proposed ordinance, O 19-25, right? Resolution R 18-196?
That's correct.
It's not an accompanying resolution. It should be just the ordinance, the board acting on the ordinance.
My apologies. Okay, I'd like to move for ordinance O 19-25.
I have a motion to have a second.
I'll second it for discussion purposes.
Second by Ms. Bomke. Discussion.
So, I am in favor of the TDR program. I supported it at the very beginning, but I do continue to have heartburn over the fact that somebody that has a lot, even though there aren't very many lots remaining in Crowsnest Harbor, that they receive a development right. If it's not buildable, and they are below one acre, they should not be getting a development right. And if you read the entire board report, you will see that there was somebody that came and asked the board about this. And I feel that our board is giving preferential treatment to people that want these development rights, and it is not good policy on our part. And, you know, they can, this land can be put into a conservation easement, it will forever be protected, and these lots will never be, will never be developed. But, you know, I feel, even though they may only be receiving a little bit of money, it doesn't really matter. We're giving them a development right that they, in reality, are not entitled to. And I feel that's preferential treatment. And in addition to that, I feel that in the event, especially with this TDR issue that we just voted on regarding healthy growth strategies, there could be some unintended consequences that we don't even know about, because, when we get into this more comprehensive TDR, if we expand that to the entire county, that we don't even know about, that we're setting ourselves up for, from legal challenges and that kind of thing. And God knows, we've had enough of legal challenges throughout the county. So, I am not in favor of granting the people in Crowsnest Harbor that have, you know, once the hydric soils and all the slopes and everything have been removed, if you are less than one acre, I do not believe they should be entitled to a development right.
Any other discussion? Anything at all? I agree with Ms. Bomke. I'm afraid we're setting a precedent here, if we're granting development rights to a piece of property that can't be built on to start with. So, I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote no. That said...
Wait, wait, I have one more thing.
I'm sorry, Ms. Bomke.
So, I'm sorry, I meant to bring this up as well. You all may know by reading in the background materials, the Planning Commission voted six to zero, and I believe Mr. Apicello was not there. They voted against approving this ordinance. So, they had a tremendous amount of discussion on this as well.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. Call of the vote. This thing kills me. Motion fails, six to one. That concludes our afternoon and early evening session. We are going to take a recess. We will be back at 7:00 PM. The meeting will, a work session upstairs in ABC, that is correct. Session of the Board of Supervisors. This time, I would ask, you rise, Mr. Corn is going to lead us in prayer, and I'll lead us in pledge.
Lord, we thank you for our many blessings, for our family and our friends who we cherish, for being in a society which allows us certain basic freedoms that we hope to cherish and continue to pass on to future generations. Please be with our men and women in the military, as they are often in harm's way. Be with our first responders, who are always there protecting us and taking care of us, and often putting their lives on the line for us. Please let us enjoy the good blessings that you give to us in the weather, and we hope that we will continue to be your servants. In your name we play. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to have public presentations. I would ask that if you're here for a public hearing, that you reserve your comments. When that public hearing comes up, public presentations are for any subject you'd like to speak about, except those subjects that are on tonight's agenda for a public hearing. You will have ample opportunity to speak at that time. When I call your name or when you come to the podium, please state your name and address, unless you're a student. If you're a student, state your name only. You will have three minutes to cover any subject you'd like. When the green light comes on, you start. The yellow light is, you've got about a minute left, and when the red light comes on, please wrap up your comments. Okay, with that said, I do have a speaker card, Mr. Price Jet. Price and Peter Jet, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. You are speaking in reference to something that'll be voted on later. Should we do that now?
You'll have to wait. You'll have to wait, yeah. I have another one from Carla Jordan, which is also on the Cultural Center. I think all of these are on the, yeah, so when the public hearing comes up, these folks will be called first, okay? Is anyone else in the chamber that would like to come forward to speak on any subject?
All right, I have an audience, I love it. I'm so lonely in here many times. Paul Waldowski, I'm a lifelong learner. I would classify myself as a student, but I'll give you eight picket lanes, so you all know where I live. This afternoon, they had a discussion about what are called TDRs. I had to look in my archives of transferred development rights, which is a way of controlling land use to complement zoning and strategic planning for more effective urban growth and land conservation, like the Crowsnest. The problem at hand in Stafford County is a rural bedroom community with, we all know, the Houses of Acquahia, which is in HOA, Houses of Acquahia, which is now 50 years in existence, where the median income is well over $100,000 versus an urban one that Richmond bureaucrats tried to force through the Commonwealth as urban development areas under Dillon's rule. If you don't know who Dillon was, he was the Chief Justice of the Iowa Supreme Court, and in 1968, he brought down two court decisions. It affirms that the previously held narrow interpretation of local government's authority, which you're looking in front of me, in which city or county government may engage in an activity only if it's specifically sanctioned by the state government. So, you know what? Welcome to a Dillon state. There are 11 other ones who are real states, and then there's another Commonwealth, Massachusetts, that's under Dillon rule. Now, TDR is a creative, innovative, but it's an experimental form of development control. So, when you build this committee, you've got to remember that you're offering landowners financial incentives or bonuses for conservation and maintenance of the environmental heritage or agricultural values of their land. Now, you all know Lady Justice has a blindfold on, but you Republicans have a pirate's patch on the left eye, so you favor the right. If we had Democrats here, we'd put a pirate's patch on Lady Justice on the right eye, so we could favor the left. Now, TDR is based on the concept that when land ownership comes the right of use of land or development, these land-based development rights can, in some jurisdictions, be used, unused, transferred, or sold by the owner of a parcel. Developers can even purchase the development rights of certain properties within a designated sending area and transfer the rights to another receiving district to increase the density of their new development. Now, don't we need some more new developments?
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else in the chamber like to address the board? Yes, come on down.
David Sousa, is this thing working? Okay, doesn't sound like it. I have two things I'd like to say. First, I was going to be talking about, I didn't want to talk about at the 3:00 meeting, because we, I was talking about, you know, supporting my peers in the road conditions. At the school board meetings, of which I also attend, there seems to be a lot of talk about trying to mimic Fairfax County here in Stafford, and I just get really frustrated that, and I just want to advise the board here to not try. Like, you can take some things that Fairfax County does, but like, we're not Fairfax County, we're Stafford County, and that's a pretty good thing, because they're all a bunch of rich people, right? And they have all this money, and they're super, you know, we have, we're in the process of developing our land. There's, you know, here in the Garrisonville area, we have, you know, all these suburbs and things like that, but, you know, that's, it's like that for the entire county, and it's super congested, and the property values are like, the houses are starting at $700,000. So, we don't have this kind of money here, so when, you know, and I'm not pointing anybody out, but in the last couple of school board meetings, there's like, they're talking, either people, or sometimes the school board is like, well, Fairfax does this. Well, to be honest, I don't necessarily care what Fairfax does, because we're not Fairfax. We don't have all this money. The total, like, if you add up all the real estate value in Fairfax, it's like $200 billion. Ours is, what, 20? So, what does that say? They have way more money than us. And the second thing came up during the 3:00 meeting, and it is what Ms. Bomke said with the Crowsnest property values, the transferred development rights. I just want to say that I completely agree with you, that if you have this land, and you don't have the ability to build on it, then we're basically just giving them money if they transfer those development rights to us, and if we transfer, they transfer the development rights to the county, and they can't build on it anyway. So, I just wanted to say that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber like to address the board? Thank you very much. I'll bring it back. Yes?
Danielle Cortez, 19 Hidden Springs Land, the Acquahia District. Next Tuesday, voters will send this board a message. Delegate Bob Thomas says, political actions will be judged. The President of the United States should be interested. Not that long ago, this independent voter, by White House invitation, after being announced and formally received, stood by the President in private reception. In the East Room, the President spoke about economic advance, tax reform, gun rights, and immigration reform. He has a history of seeking out genuine patriots, veterans, to solicit opinion and show his support. Delegate Bob Thomas of our 28th District, also by invitation, has stood by the President's side as he signed an executive order to improve the lives of veterans and end the tragedy of veteran suicide. He recently stood with Carlos Hopkins of Virginia's Veterans and Defense Affairs, Commissioner John Newby of the Department of Veteran Services, and Eric Olson, our distinguished Commonwealth attorney, as we met with the Honorable Luis Quinones, Special Assistant to the President, to advance state legislation that Bob will sponsor for compassionate veteran courts and dockets while supporting H R 886, the Veterans Treatment Court Coordination Act of 2019. While on this board, and as our delegate, Bob Thomas responsibly has reached across the aisle, supporting legislation for all voters in this district. He's funded enforcement to combat the MS-13 gang scourge that murdered my godson and violates our young. And with an A rating, Bob Thomas is the only candidate in his race formerly endorsed by the NRA, while delivering the second-largest tax cut in Virginia history. Ladies and gentlemen, in my 35 years in Stafford, my observation is, conservatives who don't genuinely demonstrate bipartisanship don't get elected. Bob Thomas is not your typical politician. He pays his taxes. He's proud of his past, serving in the Marine Corps for eight... He's proud of his past, serving in the Marine Corps for eight years. And with eight children, he's a decent, solid family man. I'm an independent Vietnam veteran, voting the person, not the party, and Bob Thomas has represented everyone, regardless of race, creed, or color. I don't feel the same for his primary opponent. I encourage you to join me and reelect Bob Thomas next Tuesday because I believe he's a man the President wants, once again, by his side. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the chamber like to address the board? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Public hearings. Item number 24. Consider amending and reordaining Stafford County Code, Chapter 15, Article 7, towing or trespassing motor vehicles from private property to comply with changes to the Code of Virginia. Mr. County Administrator, who's addressing that with the board?
Mr. Chairman, I might apologize and ask that we perhaps go to the next item to get that clarified.
Okay, well, I see the sheriff getting ready to come down. Sheriff, you?
I thought he would have come right up, and I wanted to make sure we had him.
Come on down, sheriff.
In case he wasn't available.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm going to turn this presentation over to Captain Lee Peters, but what we're addressing tonight is back on July 1st, 2018, the state code was changed, and there were a couple revisions made to it pertaining to the pricing of towing vehicles from private property and also the way notification would be made. And I'll let Captain Peters present that to you.
Good evening, everyone. The Stafford County ordinance on private property towing must reflect what the state code now says. So as the sheriff said back in July of 2018, after some lobbying by the towers, the code was changed to make towing less restrictive on the tow companies to take vehicles from private property. Now, unbeknownst to us at the time, the code was changed, and the Code of Virginia now stands that the restrictions are less restrictive than they used to be. So as you can see on the PowerPoint, it used to be the towers had to obtain written authorization from the person in charge of a property before they could remove a vehicle from private property. In addition, there was contract requirements for them before they could go inside of the private property and take the vehicles from there. What has happened is the state code has now changed to say that there is no longer a requirement to have written authorization prior to moving a vehicle. The other big change is the price has increased in one area and decreased in another. So what we've done is we've updated the county code to reflect exactly what the state code says. So now, the county is enforcing the proper rules, regulations, and laws to reflect what the Code of Virginia says.
Any questions, Captain Peter? Any questions at all? Thank you, sir. With that, I will open the public hearing. Once again, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address when you come to the podium. The green light is a go. The yellow light is a minute left. And when it hits red, please wrap up your comments. Anyone on my right would like to speak on this issue? Anyone on my left?
Yes, this is an issue. It's not an opportunity. So citizen, let me give you your rights. You can issue a tow truck company what's called a Virginia No Trespass Notice. I have private property. I've had active-duty Army E7s had their vehicles towed while they're on active duty, serving our country. Now, I already brought up Dillon's law for you. You can see about less restrictive, no written authorization anymore. But I just gave you the written authorization that you, as an owner, have. There were contract requirements because even Congressman Jim Moran was such an advocate of these tow truck drivers who basically are stealing from your private property. And without authority, I don't lie, cheat, or steal because I'm a retired Air Force officer. So you vote how you want to vote. It's Dillon's law.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to address the board on this issue? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. What's the pleasure of the board? Mr. Cohen?
Motion to approve ordinance, I believe, 019-131, I believe.
Correct. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Bonkey? Any discussion? Hearing none, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Must be hand-counting them. Motion passes seven to nothing. Once again, folks, that was to bring us into compliance with Virginia law. Item number 25. Parks and Recreation and Community Facilities. Consider leasing county-owned property at Duff Green Park to the Potomac Indian Tribe, George Washington District.
Good evening, Chairman, vice chairman, members of the board. I'm Brian Southall, the Assistant Director of Parks, Rec, Community Facilities. And I have an assistant tonight. I wanted to give you a short presentation on the Potawatomi Tribe lease of the Duff Green Park.
Computer, please.
All right, next slide. The introduction is, we're going to discuss a little bit about the proposed lease, the goals of the tribe, plan improvements, and a few details. The purpose of the lease of leasing the Duff Green House on the property is to promote the mission of the education of the Potawatomi Tribe. The tribe plans on building a cultural village and an educational museum. Their target of all ages in a 50-mile radius. They currently travel to local schools and reach around 10,000 to 12,000 students. They will also make use of county-owned structure on the facility and adjacent acres to provide this opportunity. Next slide. The goals of the Potawatomi Tribe are to preserve and protect their cultural elements of the tribe, create an experience of learning the natural American village for all ages, establish a museum on the property, provide a cultural center to offer classes on Native American culture, partner with local universities in Virginia Tech, also to work with these universities to establish native plants and also an opportunity to grow pre-colonial corn and tobacco. The tribe business plan has phased in their plan, which is very respectful. Phase one is construct a village, walk-in trails, working with Virginia Tech on native plants, improve access, signage, and start renovation on the first floor. Second phase is continue the gardens, plantings, expansion of parking areas, renovate and start the renovations of the second and third floor. Then the third phase is to continue the renovations of the Duff House. Few details of the lease. It's a 10-year lease with four 10-year options that would equal 50 years. They're looking at approximately 16.9 acres that would encompass the land immediately around the house and all the outbuildings. The improvements to the property by the tribes are identified in the lease operation, maintenance responsibilities of the tribe. And the lease also grants the tribe permission to charge admission. With that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions, Brian? Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
With that said, I'm going to open the public hearing. I do have several speaker cards, and I'll call your name in the order that I receive them. First speaker card is Price and Peter Jet.
Mr. Chairman and distinguished members of the board, I've had the great privilege several times to present to you some information about this project, so I will not belabor the point and do it again. I simply want to announce two things. One thing that makes me so proud of this group is their contribution to the community. As you know, in the scouting world, there is one particularly difficult badge to acquire on your way to Eagle Scout, should you choose to go that route. And that is a Native American culture badge. The tribe, a generous member of the tribe, has agreed to pay full tuition for any child from Stafford County who would like to participate in that class and receive the requirements of that badge to become a full scout. The second thing I'd like to announce is a special speaker here today is someone who has actually been through that class and is a scout here in Stafford, and that is my son, Peter Jet. Peter?
Hello, my name is Peter Jet. And I was in the Native American language class for students from first grade up until eighth grade. And it taught me the basics of my colors and my numbers. And it taught me basic dialogue between members of the Native American tribe. I've prepared a little introduction today, and it goes a little something like this. Natutuins, opave kwanagitaras. Aniraneinewa, opave pohawa minj, senakamaka. And that translates, well, natutuins translates into "my name is." And opave kwanagitaras translates into "white owl," which is my name in Native American. And aniraneinewa, which translates in Algonquian to "I am from." And opave pohawa minj is "white oak." So by saying senakamaka, that's the Algonquian word for Virginia. So when I put it all together, in English, it means, "hello, my name is white owl. I am from..." Hello, my name is white owl. I am from white oak, Virginia. And my teacher would respond to that with winganusi, which means "very good." Thank you for letting me speak today. And I hope you give us this museum so other kids can learn about the history of the Potawatomi.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next speaker is Carla Jordan.
Hi, I'm Carla Jordan, 839 Garrisonville Road. I don't know how I'm going to top that, though. So, the Stafford Board of Supervisors members should vote to approve the Potawatomi Tribe Cultural Center. There are many ways this center could benefit the community, including preservation of natural areas and increased tourism. According to TravelResearch.com, culture and heritage tourists spend about 38% higher per day and stay in an area 22% longer compared to other types of travelers. Additionally, a study released by the Institute of Museum and Library Sciences in 2014 determined that children who visit museums obtain higher scores on standardized tests in reading, math, and science, indicating educational benefits as well. Modern statistics also reveal that millennials are about 10% more likely to visit museums as a form of entertainment than people over the age of 35. So this cultural center would provide engaging activities for upcoming generations. Therefore, the Potawatomi Tribe Cultural Center would improve education for local schoolchildren, enhance natural and historic preservation efforts, expand cultural knowledge of the area, attract tourism in revenue, and benefit Stafford County in numerous other ways. Thank you for listening to our concerns and voting to approve this project. It's the right thing to do.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Marina Hunez. Did I get that right? Oh, I finally got one right. I didn't do too well in the afternoon session, believe me. I think the only one I got right was Smith.
Hello, my name's Marina Hunez. My address is 42048 Foley Headwaters, Aldi, Virginia, 20105. My purpose in being here today is to speak in favor of the Potawatomi Cultural Museum site. As a landscape architect for Duber Engineers, I helped the tribe develop a conceptual site plan. The site design concept is entitled Cultural Transcendence, which is based on the Potawatomi's cultural origin that is driven by three influential components, such as survival, perseverance, and tradition. The gateway entrance to the site is a circular artistic landmark that represents the tribe's grand sacred symbol. This area is a place for visitors to pause and to embrace the tribe's symbolic message, "proud people of Virginia." Three separate trails spiral off of the symbolic landmark, leading visitors to experience the tribe's historical way of life. The three trails become paths, signifying their persistence in surviving, their stronghold of perseverance, and their dedication to tradition. The Trail of Survival demonstrates the grinding of corn, the creation of how arrowheads by flint napping, and casting pottery. The Trail of Perseverance displays architectural elements of village longhouses, high tanning, dugout canoes, and Native American gardening. The Trail of Tradition leads people to a ceremonial space to learn about the tribe's history and a place to teach language classes while overlooking the river. In closing, I feel honored and proud to be helping the Potawatomi Tribe because we both share Native American heritage. My grandfather is 100% Comanche, and I'm a third Native American from Comanche and Apache tribes. We hope for this motion to be granted for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Minnie Leitner.
My name is Minnie Leitner. I live at 1416 Brunt Street. Actually, I'm here, I have, we have a gentleman, an elderly tribal member that couldn't be here tonight. He asked if I would read a statement from him. His name is John Chin. And he says, "Honorable Board of Supervisors and good citizens of Stafford County, Virginia. I am a son of Stafford, a son of white oak, proud member of the Potomac Indian Tribe of Virginia. I ask that the citizens of Stafford stand with us, asking for a favorable vote that will create a Potomac Tribal Center. Stand with us, citizens of Stafford, as you are our brothers and sisters. What happened in the past to our ancestors and us, you do not do. There is no perfect nation with a perfect history. There is no perfect race. Let us celebrate our history, not allowing it to become a burden, an impediment to the future. Utilize the Duff Green property for our cultural center will aid in a better understanding of the American Indian. To all who live in Stafford County, when you walk this land, walk with love for her. For wherever you walk, you step on my heart. Wanixi, which means "may your way be beautiful." Many paths, Johnny MacChin." Thank you."
Thank you. Next speaker card I have is Lauren McMillan.
Lauren McMillan, 873 White Oak Road. I'm a resident of Stafford County, but I'm also an assistant professor of archaeology in the Department of Historic Preservation at the University of Mary Washington. I'm not here representing the university, however. I am instead speaking from the perspective of a professional archaeologist and an educator, and based on the work and interactions I've had with the Potawatomi Tribe... Sorry, I have a cold, guys. Three main points that I have in support of this lease for development, the tribal center, based on the collaborative partnership that I and my students have had with the tribe. Really, the first and main one is the archaeological and historical research that the tribe has engaged in. We have recently begun a long-term research project with the Potomac Tribe in search of the town of Koya, which was one of the original towns of the Potomac people that John Smith visited in 1607. It's also where we get the term Akwaia Creek, is Koya. The tribe did the initial research based on historical documents... The tribe did the initial research based on historical documents and cultural knowledge, and then my students and I came in in partnership and worked with the tribe in excavations and analysis and interpretations. And this project illustrates the need for a base for the tribe, for the processing and analysis, storage, curation, and display of artifacts, and also a place for them to centrally come together and do research. I also want to briefly mention the cultural and language revitalization programs that the tribe has, particularly the language program. They're the only tribe less than in Virginia that still teaches the Algonquin language, and I was actually very lucky enough to take the introductory class, although I was nowhere near as good as that young man earlier. I also do want to mention the importance of the eel pots, which is one of the traditional crafts of the Potomac Tribe. It's a particular type of fish trap that there are members of the tribe who are learning, relearning how to do this particular craft. But one of the issues is the lack of natural resources in Stafford County, and particularly a specific type of white oak tree. It has to be really tall and skinny. And this cultural center would be an ideal place to replant and regrow this type of white oak tree. And I know that the members of the tribe are looking to the Eastern Band of the Cherokee to see how they are doing their revitalization project of the white oak basket tree. And lastly, I just want to say, point to the importance of a museum and educational opportunities in the county. And particularly, I want to point to the opportunity for tourism and the facilities proximity to Ferry Farm. And there are very few native-run villages in the Commonwealth. Most notably, there's the Monakin. Then you have to go even further south to the Eastern Band of the Cherokee to do this. And the Cherokee get dozens, if not hundreds, of people a day that come to their village to see, to see and learn. And so in summary, I just want to say the Potomac Tribe is dedicated to public outreach and education at all levels, from young children to university students to the broader Stafford County community and to visitors to our area. And I think the approval of this lease for a cultural center for the Potomac Tribe would not only benefit the tribe, but Stafford County and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one last speaker card, and that's Mr. Don Shelton.
Good evening. I'm Don Shelton. I live in King George County. I'm the vice president of the King George Historical Society, and I'm a member of the Potomac Tribe. And this is a great thing. The Historical Society votes and supports, and I do too. And thank you for all the work you have done on this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So all the speaker cards I have. Is anyone else on my right that would like to address the board on this subject? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman and the board, it's been 300 years since we've had a permanent home.
Could you give us your name and address?
Charles Bootsy Bullock, 215 Chapel Green Road.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, because most, some of y'all know me. You made that mistake. But anyway, it's been 300 years since the Potomac has had a permanent home. As the first people of Stafford County, we thank you for even considering this. And we ask for your blessings on it tonight, as we ask the blessings from our Creator. We're very honored, and we look forward to the partnership if the so vote carries. We thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right like to address the board? Anyone on my left?
Paul Wodowski, 8 Pickett Lane. I have a personal story about Virginia that applies to why this is a really great thing for Stafford County. I learned that tobacco was the cash crop in Virginia by taking my boys, who were millennials. You know, they're born between 1981 and 1997. I'm a baby boomer. I'm born between 1946 and 1964. So I count on you millennials because you now outnumber us. But the neat part of learning the native culture and the plants was it helped me understand why Virginia is a Commonwealth. It was very important that the small settler, who had just a little area to grow tobacco, which was taught by the Indians. So it's a very interesting aspect that I think you should consider on the land you're going to have. My hope is that you will not have just a lease, that you will eventually own the land. And to piggyback off the young boy scout, my dad would have been 88 years old on June 7th, and as you all, 75 years old this year. But my dad was an Eagle Scout, and if it wasn't for him, I would have never got in the Order of the Arrow, which is a very interesting elite group in scouting that would be another cultural element that would add to this very elegant and cultural aspect. I'm anxious to see what the Duff House will become, and like many redevelopment projects in this county that are purely failure, I know you all do a good job. I won't be here in 300 years, but God, Godspeed to you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the chamber would like to address the board on this subject?
My name is Lou Ellen Whitefeather. I am one of the oldest members, perhaps, in the Potomac Indian Tribe. And I like to say Captain John Smith did not know how to spell very well. He came, he listened, he wrote down some history, and he said, when he got his diary back to England, that the Potawomacs, with his P-A, T-A-Ws, were the Indians that he had met in the Yeh Colony of Virginia on the river that was long and wide. I'm just going to present you a little trivia tonight. We had a visitor to the Mary Washington University Graduate School a couple of winters ago, and he was from Soulgrave Manor, which was the home of the Washington family over in England. And he said, "I asked specifically to see where the Indians were living in Stafford County. So they put me on a boat in Colonial Beach and brought me up Potawomac River. So when it came question time, I raised my hand and I said, 'You believe in John Smith's spelling? I do not. I think our ancestors called it the Potomac River, and the Acquia Landing, and the Chappaamasa Creek'. And they had a language which John Smith never learned how to spell. But whenever you call it anything that starts with a P-A or a P-O, we think we know who you're talking about. There wasn't but one great Indian tribe over here on the Potomac Creek. And I suspect Mr. Duff Green is probably a distant relative, if not a closer relative. I had the great pleasure of teaching him how to use ATM machine when Fredericksburg got its first ATM machine. He was on the board of directors for the Old Dominion Bank. A fine man. And maybe one day we'll make him a honorary member of the Potomac Indian Tribe. And we know some of you all have a bit of the Potomac Indian blood also. So you all come over and see us once we get established. We've been working on projects such as this one for 40 years. And thanks to you all, we're thinking we're going to see some progress.
Thank you, Ms. Whitefeather. Any other, anyone else in the chamber like to address the board on this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the board. Mr. Cohen, it's your district, your motion.
Yes, I'm going to proudly make the motion for our 19-178. I have been very impressed with the Potomac Tribe. I hope I did it right. And Ms. Mauer, just a second, as well as Ms...
I have a motion and I have a second. Is there any discussion, Mr. Cohen?
Yep, I'll just finish. I've been impressed with the amount of work they've done. I mean, this has been, as Ms. Whitefeather said, 40 years or more in the making. And I have been impressed by what they have put together, what they have done, the fundraising efforts, not to mention everything that that tribe has done. That tribe is the history of Stafford County and of the United States. It is the right thing to be doing. When I met with Price back in November, December last year, I said I was going to move whatever I could to make this happen in a timely fashion, and I'm very appreciative of the staff and the board members for helping me live up to that commitment. I understand that education is what Duff Green wanted to happen with his property, and so this fits with what he would like. And you pointed out, it's just a natural fit for our county to start with this tribal center, then go to Ferry Farm, then up to Chatham, Belmont, up to the future Stafford Museum, to the Acquia Church, and then the Marine Corps Museum. It is the right thing to do, and I'm very proud to make that motion.
Ms. Mauer.
So we deal with a lot of really tough, weighty issues around here, and I cannot begin to express how beautiful it is to listen to all of you come before us and share your stories. And I want to thank you. This one's an easy decision, and I appreciate that you're going to be investing. You've been here for 300 years, and you're going to continue to invest in Stafford County. And this is an excellent opportunity for not only, you know, to celebrate your tribe, but also to provide the rest of the nation an opportunity to learn about you, and, and most importantly, the children here in Stafford, to provide them an opportunity and a place. And so thank you. Thank you for your investment in Stafford, because, you know, we're just giving you a spot. You guys are going to be doing the hard work. And easy decision, and looking forward to coming and visiting.
Any other discussion, Ms. Baumke?
So I would like to echo some of those comments. And I know, I understand why Bootsy got a little choked up up there. I can't believe how you all have schlepped all of your artifacts and everything around for so many years for the benefit of the kids in this Commonwealth and some out of state. I mean, it's, it's an unbelievable feat. I would like to just mention, and as they said, this is an exciting time. I think this is one of the most exciting things we've done in Stafford in a long time. But I would like to just bring your attention to something that we've done here in Stafford within the last year with our strategic plan. You may have noticed, if you read at the bottom of our, the board packet on this item, it says "Strategic Priorities", and listed under there is one of our priorities that we settled on, and it's called "The Heartbeat of Recreation, History, and Culture". And that was something that we decided on as a board, that we felt that was important to Stafford County. So one thing that, I know you're going to be off to the races and moving forward with a lot of things, but I would like to challenge our board, not, and not this year's budget, because we have just approved our budget, but in the next year's and the other year's budgets, how can we, as a board, help you financially on some more big-ticket item things that perhaps we can do? This is going to be bringing a tremendous amount of tourism to Stafford County, and I feel that we need to have some ownership in this as well. I feel that you have carried the weight for many, many years. So I just offer that. I'm only one board member. I know others would agree. Tom's sitting here smiling. But I feel that that's our responsibility. So anyway, we can talk about that more down the road, but I'm very excited to support this tonight. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, I'd just like, congratulations to you. I think this is going to be a pretty clean sweep for you, but I just want to mention Duff Green one more time. I only met him once. But for a guy that didn't know how to use an ATM machine, he did pretty good. And he has left so much to Stafford County, with that endowment, with that park, and all that he's done, and his name will go on forever. So with that, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to nothing. Congratulations, and we look forward to the ribbon cutting and groundbreaking. Thank you very much. Item number 26, Planning and Zoning, Consider an Ordinance to amend and reordain County Code Section 28-24, Measurements to reduce encroachment into side yards for outside basement entrances and ingress egress window wells, Proposed Ordinance 019-10. Mr. Harvey. That was a mouthful.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. This proposed amendment is very narrow in focus. It specifically applies to single-family detached homes in our Plan Development II zoning district. We currently have one zoning district in the county. It's designated PD 2, and that's the Embry Mill neighborhood. This amendment would help rectify a problem that was seen during review of individual house building permits, where the building code allows houses closer to the property line than zoning code. In these particular instances, there were subterranean features such as exit emergency window wells for basement bedrooms, as well as below-ground stairs for well exits for the basement. This proposed amendment would allow those type of features to encroach within three feet of a side yard within this zoning category. This ordinance amendment would only apply to building permits submitted to our department prior to June 14th of 2018. And I'll be happy to answer. Any additional questions?
Any questions for Mr. Harvey? Thank you, Mr. Harvey. With that, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the chamber that would like to address this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board and close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion? I have a motion by Ms. Mauer. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Shelton. Any discussion? Well, that's what I assumed, yes.
I should say the words, "Motion for approval".
I tell you, y'all getting real down in the weeds on words today. Motion for approval of 019-10 by Ms. Mauer, seconded by Ms. Shelton. Any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. Tally the vote. The motion passes seven to nothing. Item number 27, Public Works Code Compliance, Consider Adoption of a Code Amendment to Address Vacation and of Unsafe Structures Unfit for Occupancy.
Good evening. Thank you. I appear before you again to request your approval of a Code Amendment to provide the building official with clear authority that a lot of people assume she already has, which is to require, in what we hope are rare and infrequent circumstances, the immediate vacation of a building that's deemed unfit or unsafe for occupancy. And again, we hope those are rare and infrequent situations that the building official has to make that determination.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll open it up to a public hearing. Anyone in the chamber like to speak for or against this ordinance?
Paul Wodowski, 8 Pickett Lane. Of course, I'm for this ordinance, because I basically want to see these unsafe houses on 610, past the commercial corridor, you know, where you're going to have all the car washes, and then you have some stuff, and then another car wash. If you go down the road, there's some unsafe buildings, and I'm more worried about the children that live in those areas and explore. And if you listen to young David here, you listen to some of these guys, these young kids who grew up here, and they watch these hills get knocked down in different aspects. They're well aware of their community aspects, so it's a long time coming that we finally have an ordinance. have an ordinance, give someone the authority to do the right job.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber want to speak for or against? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board and close the public hearing.
A move for approval of 019-32.
I have a motion by Ms... Meg?
Yes.
Ms. Bomke, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Shelton. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to nothing. Item number 28, Public Works Transportation, Consider Granting a Permanent Utility Easement on County-Owned Property, Tax Map Parcel 21-16 to Dominion Energy, Virginia.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here to speak about R. 19-126. I received a request from Dominion Energy, Virginia, to grant a utility easement to them along Tax Map Parcel 21-16. This is the Tax Map Parcel on Jugins Road, where we're currently constructing the Amancure Elementary School. This would be grant Dominion a 15-foot underground easement, so they could place the existing overhead electric lines underground along the roadway, and this would be at no cost to the county. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll open the public hearing. Is anyone in the chamber want to speak for or against? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board, close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Cavalier moves for approval. Ms. Mauer seconds. Any discussion? Cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to nothing. That ends our public hearings for the evening, but we do have some unfinished business from this afternoon that we do need to take up, some new business, I'm sorry. First, a discussion of alternative plan for broadband requested by Mr. Cavalier.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We had a committee meeting today that discussed what we were going to do after the failed grant application from last year, or came out this year. And so, there's a second round coming up that we have to make our application by September, and we'd like to go ahead and go forth with that project. But what I really want to emphasize here, and disappointed that we lost the first time, so, and I'd like to plan a little bit more this time for that contingency, if it does occur, that we come up with some sort of alternative plan on our own to address this broadband situation, particularly in Marlboro Point and Wide Water, because those are the areas that we talked about the last time, and that can be added to also, if anybody else has areas that they would like included in this project. If we get the grant, of course, it doesn't cost us anything. If we don't, I'm going to recommend that we spend money to get these rural residents broadband, high-speed internet service that they cannot get at this point.
Mike Cannon, thank you. Sure. I mentioned Mike Cannon, the Chief Technology Officer for Stafford County, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. As I mentioned in our CEDC meeting earlier today, we have an opportunity to apply for another VADA grant. To start the process, though, we have to identify a partner, and we would issue an RFI in the next couple of weeks that would seek partners that would propose areas in the county where there's unserved and broadband and a need for residents to get service. So the hope is that they would identify areas that, like Mr. Cavalier mentioned, that are in desperate need of broadband and are unserved now. And we could apply for more than one grant, so if we got more than one good response from a partner, we could go after a second grant as well.
Any questions, Mr. Cannon? Anything else, Mike?
No, I mean, there are other options that we could pursue. If it's the will of the board, we can, you know, take those up after we hear how this process goes.
Yeah, I'd like to pursue as many options. Obviously, we've got the same situation in Hartwood, and many parts of Hartwood, and Rock Hill, and Wide Water. So we're going to have to, it's going to be more than just one area, so as much as we can pursue.
Right. And Mr. Chairman, I don't want to wait until we find out that we lost to come up with a new plan. I'd like to start that process now to see what alternatives we may have and what the cost may be for these unserved areas.
Okay. Mr. Cannon, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay. I wanted to add to and ask some questions of you, Mr. Cannon. When we started this process last year, I was a new board member, and I really didn't know a lot of things. And so, I started the approach with Marlboro Point, just as a pilot project. And so, I really appreciate the fact that going through that process and going through the VADA grant was useful, but my apologies to others that I didn't have a Plan B going on in parallel. So our intent, and I echo Mr. Cavalier's concern, is to make sure going forward that we don't duplicate the mistake that I made, so that as we go forward with this VADA grant, we're also looking at a larger solution for all of Stafford County, because the VADA grant's going to only cover targeted areas. And so, I think that we need a more comprehensive solution, and that I'm not quite sure where that's going to be approached, but I would like that you, as the CTO, to be able to come back to us at some time in the future to tell us what you think that that solution should be.
Okay. I'd be happy to. Obviously, one area that, as if we were to have a comprehensive strategy countywide, we'd probably want to bring in some experts to advise us on how to best approach that. There are a lot of options, and we could also look at the county's fiber network, schools' fiber needs, all of our freestanding structures that we have, and other assets that we could perhaps leverage to provide service.
And one more thing I was going to add, back to our downtown center, and we're looking at smart cities. That's also why that's really, really important, because as we go through and we pursue our interest to become a smart county, we can't do it without broadband. And so, that's why it needs to be included in that strategy.
Mr. Cavalier.
And if I could just add, just as a starting point, so we don't lose any momentum on this and lose the bubble and forget about it until it's too late again, but just, I think, are you the chairman of the Infrastructure Committee?
Aye.
You are. Could you get periodic updates on this as we go this year? Thank you.
No further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Cannon.
Thank you.
The last item of the evening, Discussion Regarding Transportation Bond Referendums, requested by Mr. Dudin Heffer.
And the reason was, this was supposed to take place before our work session today, and it was kind of a parliamentary way of getting it on unfinished business next week, so we could discuss and possibly vote. But as we had our work session this afternoon, and we've got a strategy going forward, I don't, just, we don't need a vote or anything on this, this is just information purposes.
Yes, Mr. Cohen?
Well, I just wanted to kind of, would you like to sum up what we talked about at our, we asked the staff to bring something forward, three options.
Go ahead.[1537.62][1537.62](Laughter). I mean, it's preliminary, so...
It's preliminary. So the timeframe for this, and this is, it's preliminary, but it's still very exciting. So there was consensus among the board to start researching a bond referendum. So in the next two meetings, and this is really important for the public and those that want to get involved, we're going to be discussing a bond referendum for this next election that's coming up in November. And what the bond referendum gives you the opportunity to do, there will be several projects. We have gone through a year-long transportation study. Mr. Dudin Heffer and I served on that committee together to look at all of the roads in Stafford County, kind of rack and stack them as far as, you know, and we looked at several different metrics. I'm not going to go into a long-drawn-out explanation of that. And from that project, we are now looking at ways of funding those road improvements instead of waiting for VDOT. It's very exciting for Stafford. We're kind of looking at taking the bull by the horns, and I want to thank this board for agreeing to open it up for the conversation for the next two meetings.
Any other comments, Mr. Cohen?
Yes, if I could. And there wasn't really time during our dinner, at least that I saw. I just would hope, and perhaps either you, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Foley, can look at, this afternoon, we had the students, the young adults, come forward with many different ideas and their data. And they had their short, the middle, and sort of the long-term type goals. Short-term, we're about potholes in the view on the roads. And I know part of what we have put in place is a 10-year plan, but it'd be interesting, since that's something that they have data and they have worked on, my concern is that a 10-year plan is, by the time we get to 10 years, it'll be all going on again. So it may be something that we need to, I hate this word, redouble, but focus a little bit more on, or not lose sight of. They also asked about a link to our website to report road damages, or potholes, or issues. Hopefully, that's something that we can look into. The middle range was, we're already moving on about trying to do High School 6 off of 17, but they talked about a social media campaign, so if we can maybe even tag into some of them about doing that type of thing. They brought forward a great amount of information, and I don't want what they have brought forward to be lost in this other effort, because I don't think that really covers exactly what they were looking at. And I think out of respect for them, we should be focusing on that as well.
Any other comments? Ms. Bomke?
Just lastly, so one thing I did about a week ago, on a Sunday after church, is I drove around my district just to see if I could find places where we had poor visibility, places that have been reported to me before. And with all the growth and the rain, and it being springtime, I went to look and see if some of those areas existed. So it's something that you might want to do in your own district. Gary, unfortunately, you're going to need five people, because your district's so big. But it's something that you might want to do. You know where your hotspots are, and, but I do think that we do need to have a conversation with VDOT, and maybe some kind of a work session, because I was a little frustrated with some of the comments that the students made about things they had, were reported that weren't, where action was not taken, and I find that a little troubling. So maybe we can have a work session with VDOT. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to have one, and Mr. Foley, maybe we can discuss it at our agenda meeting on Thursday. Any other comments? Anything at all? Well, we've had a good meeting, a productive meeting. We're not doing closed session. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.